Call the meeting to order. Laura Lee, will you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessam.
Here.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Here.
Thank you, Laura Lee. And Nancy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, our first agenda item tonight is the approval of the minutes.
Barb, do you want to do the mission statement?
Yeah, actually, I won't do it. I'll ask Stu to do it. Mission statement, please.
And I'm ready.
I see that.
All right. The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers challenges and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you, Stu. And our first item on the agenda is the approval of it, and that would be for today, March 27, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Alexandra. Alexandra and Amy. Thank you. And Laura Lee, will you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. And the next item would be the approval of our minutes, and we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is for the minutes for the February 21, 2024, meeting. And does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for February 21, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Nancy.
Second.
And Denise, Nancy and Denise. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you. And then also for the minutes of our last study session, which was March 6, 2024. And are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Denise? Okay, so Stu and then Denise. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you, Laura Lee. All right, now we can move on to the good stuff. Public participation, and we'll begin with Dr. Schaefer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. We have lots of recognitions and presentations for you this evening as part of superintendent reports, and we'll first start with an overview of some of the happenings over the last several weeks. And I will start with Donuts with Dudes at Winona Elementary School. On February 23, Winona Elementary School held its annual Donuts with Dudes program, which celebrates the impact of positive male role models within students' lives. I was honored to join the group on that day along with other individuals, including local police officers and firefighters. Education Day at Colorado State University, the Colorado State University Rams hosted their annual education day on February 28 and invited fourth graders from Thompson and Pooter School Districts. Nineteen TSD Elementary and PK8 schools were in attendance to watch the CSU Women's Basketball Team take on Nevada. CSU did win. I will notice that four TSD teachers participated in the halftime show, fourth grade teachers Brooke Erickson and Kristen Hines from Sarah Milner Elementary, and J.C. Jones and Rose Johnson from Centennial Elementary. Each of the four teachers walked away with a $100 gift card for their classroom from Shields, except J.C., who won the battle on the court and claimed her $200 Shields gift card. It was a wonderful day for all of the students and staff, and again, thank you to CSU for helping put together this amazing experience for our kids. Annual English Language Development Showcase, TSD's annual English Language Development Showcase on February 29 was a huge success, with approximately 400 people in attendance from across the district to celebrate the work of our multilingual students. In addition to exploring the student displays for each school, multilingual families were able to enjoy performances from the Truska Elementary Dance Club and a local breakdancing group, while also receiving free books in English and their home languages, discovering local community resources and connecting with each other as members of our multilingual community. Battle of the Books, after weeks of dedication and countless pages turned, TSD's Battle of the Books competition was held on March 2. The grand battles took place at the Loveland Public Library, where teams showcased their knowledge, teamwork, and love for literature. Congratulations to all the teams who participated and poured their hearts into this event. Your enthusiasm for reading is truly inspiring. Special thanks to the Loveland Public Library for hosting the event and providing the perfect backdrop for this literary showdown. The Destination Imagination Northern Colorado Canyon Regional Tournament was held on March 2 at Platt Middle School in Boulder. Thompson School District's 13 teams, who have been working on STEM-themed challenges for months, showcased their team solutions at the tournament. Among the highlights, the Cottonwood Elementary Team Los Ganadores placed first in the in-motion challenge category. The team completed this challenge 100% in Spanish, becoming the first team in Destination Imagination history to do so. The Cottonwood Elementary Group, as well as Truska Elementary's team, have both qualified for the Destination Imagination State Tournament, which will be held on April 6. Namakua Elementary School is celebrating their 50th anniversary next Tuesday, April 2, from 4 to 5 p.m. The community, along with past students, staff, and families, are invited to celebrate 50 years of excellence in education. If you have a memory to share, such as a photo or other piece of memorabilia, please bring it along that night to display. Kids Pack wrapped up their annual food drive, and we are blown away by the results. Over 38,000 pounds of food was graciously donated in this year's event. In addition, the Safeway Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program produced $29,000 in $50 gift cards throughout three distributions. The last two years created a total of $70,000 donated in three stores in Loveland. This program has now created approximately 1,400 gift cards for families in need during the holidays. Thank you to our wonderful Thompson community for your generosity. So among us today, we have four students, I believe they're here, and I'm going to ask, this is our Daniel Scholarship winner, so if we have Kennedy, Peyton, Grace, and Reese, if you would stand, and I'm going to tell everyone about what you have accomplished. There's one, two, yep. I think our third person might have just walked in, so now I'll tell you why we're clapping. Congratulations to Loveland High School seniors Kennedy Lane and Peyton Hendricks, and Loveland Classical seniors Grace Hildy and Reese Worley, who have all been selected as Daniel Scholars recipients. The Daniels Program offers a comprehensive, four-year college scholarship that provides financial and personal support focused on helping students to succeed in college and life. This is a remarkable achievement. We are very proud of them. This is a very big deal to have four Daniel Scholarship winners from our school district. Again, they all deserve a huge round of applause. And don't go too far, we'll take a picture with you shortly. Okay, moving on to Nine News Cool Schools Award. This Friday morning, and I know you're all going to be up, at 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. time period, students and staff at Ferguson High School and the Thompson Career Campus will be featured as the Nine News Cool School for the month of March. Team members from the news station were on campus on March 13 to produce a story that will be aired on Friday morning, and the station will also periodically do a live shot from the campus during that time period. This is a great honor for Ferguson High School and TCC community. We are very thankful to the team at Nine News for this terrific award, so that will be this Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. Finally, today, we hosted our annual SHADOW a District Leader Day, which was a unique opportunity for students in grades five, fifth through 12, to meet with a TSD cabinet member and their teams to learn about how the district and our schools operate. A special thanks goes out to the students who participated today, as well as their parents and guardians who helped to make, helped make today a wonderful success. We have a number of those students with us this evening. We're going to invite you all up. We've asked them to briefly maybe share a highlight or something from your day, so if you are a student that participated in SHADOW a District Leader Day, we're going to invite you to stand up, come forward, come to the podium, and again, if you can each take a grand total of 30 to 45 seconds each, that would be wonderful. But come on up, don't be shy, we're excited you're here. Do you want to tell us who you are, who you were with, and maybe just a highlight would be great?
Hi, my name is Nathan Cartwright. I was with Ms. Kelly Sane. I think the highlight today was just seeing how hard you all worked behind the scenes, and I liked seeing all the computer components and stuff.
My name's Cohen Seagerstrom. I was with Todd Paco, and I think it was just great seeing everything that goes behind the scenes to make my education possible, that the operations department does.
Nice.
I'm Audrey Roth, and I was with Dr. Schaefer. I thought it was really cool to see how many people put in so much work to make our district function and happen.
My name is Krista Hurley. I was with Dr. Schaefer, and the highlight was probably going to see what Dr. Schaefer does and how it impacts other things that go into the school district.
I'm Audrey Dean, and I was with Dr. Schneider, and my highlight was probably going to different schools. I'm Sarah, I, who was, I got the opportunity to shadow Dr. Schaefer today. I think my highlight of the day was touring the different buildings that Thompson School District kind of like runs off of, such as the, such as this building and the transportation building.
My name is Penny, and the coolest thing was getting to see the bunker in Billweed.
I agree, that was fun. I got to see it one time, too.
I'm Shyla. I was with, I can't speak, sorry. Michael Hausman, thank you. And my highlight of the day was just having fun with people I didn't know.
That's good.
I'm Maya, I was with Michael Hausman, and my highlight is absolutely going back to the previous.
I'm Mariah, and I think the best part of the day was making videos to tell teachers and other kids about what is new that is happening in our district.
Nice.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions for any of our students?
Any of you have questions? I understand, though, you were pretty tired when you got done. I heard that. What schools are you from? And then there was a Loveland Classical. Yeah, we had a Loveland, yeah. Great, thank you.
So we, we're going to do a couple series of pictures. We'd love to take a picture with this group, and then we'd like to invite our Daniel Scholars into a separate picture with you, so why don't we pause and do a couple pictures now?
All right, scoot on over, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, you ready? Face forward. Okay, Barb, slide this way a little bit, Barb. This side you see, oh, there, that's good. Yep, nope. There we go. Okay, yeah, don't do that. That'll work. Okay, on three. One, two. Thank you. All right?
Okay, we'll take a break from pictures, and now we are going to call up, we have four individuals that we will be recommending for hire, that are part of your board packet. And so these are administrators for next school year, beginning with the 24, 25 school year. And so first I'll invite up Mr. Chris Stein. And Chris Stein, we're pleased to announce as the next Assistant Principal at Walt Clark Middle School. We'll give him a moment to come forward. Mr. Stein began his 10-year career right here in TSD, teaching physical education and health at Conrad Ball Middle School. He spent three years in that position before he transitioned to Mountain View High School, again, teaching physical education and health. After two and a half years of teaching, Chris shifted into the Dean of Students, MTSS Coordinator role at Mountain View High School for the remainder of the year. As the Dean of Students, Chris oversaw student discipline, attendance, and academic support. Chris then moved into the Assistant Principal Athletic Director position at Loveland High School. As the Assistant Principal, Chris completed teacher evaluations, assisted with student behavior and attendance, and communicated with parent, staff, and the administrative team. In the role of Athletic Director, Chris was responsible for all registration eligibility, scheduling, and facility management, as well as the hiring and evaluation of head coaches and sponsors for all programs. After three years at Loveland High, Chris found himself back home at Mountain View High School, where he brought his previous experience in community ties to serve as an Assistant Principal and Athletic Director. Chris is a Colorado native and a proud graduate of Mountain View High School. His teaching experience in middle school, along with his administration experience in high school, and his lifelong community connections makes him the perfect candidate for the Walt Clark Middle School Assistant Principal. Chris received his Bachelor of Science in Health and Human Performance from Montana State University in Billings, and his Master's from UNC in Educational Leadership. Congratulations, Mr. Chris Stein. We're excited to have you in your new role.
Thank you.
If you have just maybe a few words?
Sure. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the Board of Education, just very grateful and blessed to have this opportunity to come back to Thompson School District, ready to get to work, eager, excited, and again, just very grateful and blessed, so thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next, I would like to invite up Dr. John Dumbleton. And we are very excited to recommend Dr. John Dumbleton as the next principal of Riverview Pre-K8 School. John comes to Thompson from Aurora Public Schools. In his most current position, Dr. Dumbleton serves as the Assistant Principal of Aurora Hills Middle School, a role he has held for two years. John's responsibilities were to collaborate with teachers in weekly PLCs, lead the MTSS team supporting Tier Two and Tier Three students, site assessment coordinator, and creating a literacy leadership team to improve data analysis and lesson planning processes and tools. Dr. Dumbleton also served two years as the Assistant Principal at Yale Elementary School, also within Aurora Public Schools. In this role, John was heavily involved in PLCs. He co-designed and implemented tight, flexible guidance for PLC structures alongside Yale's teachers. This led to high levels of academic growth and achievement in reading, math, and I-ready scores. He also led numerous community engagement efforts, including town halls, caregiver think tank, and Title I strategic planning. John was also a secondary literacy instructional coordinator for four years, again, in Aurora Public Schools. His responsibilities included co-creating an ongoing working partnership among secondary literacy and social studies coordinators that tackled identification of scopes and sequences, of prioritized standards, design, and implementation of pilot and adoption processes for curriculum adoption for middle school literacy, and PD related to sociopolitical development for educators. That is a run-on sentence. He also collaborated with district and building leaders across Aurora to improve literacy instruction in secondary classrooms and PLCs. Dr. Dumbleton was also a literacy instructional TOSA for two years at Aurora Hills Middle School, where he led PLCs with grade-level literacy teams, participated on the instructional leadership team, and the IB Avid Site Team. Dr. Dumbleton received his Bachelors from Metropolitan State College of Denver, his Masters in Secondary Education from the University of Alabama, his Principal Licensor and Doctorate from the University of Colorado at Denver. John's educational background in both elementary and middle school levels has prepared him to become the new Riverview Pre-K8 Principal. John, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, Board Directors, thank you for this opportunity. I am really excited to get started, really excited to come up here to Thompson and build on the great work that's already happening at Riverview, and hope to see each of you in our building next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next, we are excited to recommend Roy Trippi as the Berthold High School Principal. Roy, come on up, please. Roy began his career in education as a PE health teacher at Rocky Mountain High School in the Pooter School District, a position he held for 19 years. During this time, Roy managed the department budget, planned and facilitated department PLC work, and participated in relationship skills training. He then moved on to Wellington Middle School as the Dean of Students, where his responsibilities included working with students and parents to develop strategies to improve attendance, student behavior, and academic achievement, helping the leadership team analyze MAPS, testing data to establish focus areas of improvement, and led learning walks focused on the 5D framework with new teachers to increase knowledge around teacher evaluation rubric and improve instructional practices. Roy began his TSD career in 2019, when he was hired as an Assistant Principal Athletic Director at Thompson Valley High School. In this role, Roy was responsible for all aspects of athletics and activities, including coordination of community events such as back-to-school night, open house, and ninth-grade registration. He also hired, supervised, and evaluated licensed and classified staff, as well as his coaching staff. Roy also was the administrator for the high school TOL and SOARS programs. After three years as the APAD, Roy shifted his focus on being an Assistant Principal, a role he has held for two years. During this time, Roy expanded his strategic leadership experience by contributing and creating a focus plan to help improve student achievement and behavior. He also supported teachers in improving their instructional practice through observation and feedback, and leading professional development to become a model PLC. Roy also continued to build partnerships with families in the community. Roy holds a Bachelor's of Science in Exercise and Sports Science from Colorado State University, and also has a Master's from Colorado State University in Education and Human Resource Studies. Mr. Trippi's experience in the classroom as the Dean of Students and as an administrator have prepared him to become the next Berthold High School Principal. Roy, congratulations.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, fellow Board members, thank you, as others have said, for the opportunity, certainly grateful for that. I like Dr. Schaefer reading that, it just sounds better, so thanks for that. But also, too, I would like to just take a minute to thank the Berthold community also, the teachers, the students, the staff, the community members themselves that were a part of the interview process. That's a long day and a long process. Free lunch only gets you so far, so I do thank them for taking the time and just showing that care and concern for finding the next leader, and I'm grateful that it's me, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity, so thank you.
Thanks, Roy. The last recommendation, I'm going to ask Stephanie Cireo to please come forward. We are very excited to recommend Stephanie Cireo as an Assistant Principal at Mountain View High School. Stephanie has been an Assistant Principal at Boulder High School in the Boulder Valley School District for the past two years. During this time, her responsibilities included overseeing CLDE and how to make systems better and more equitable for students and families, MTSS, and restorative practice committee work. She is also the 504 Coordinator and collaborates with counselors and teachers to support students with academic and attendance issues. Ms. Cireo also served one year as the Dean of Students at Fairview High School. There she monitored and managed student attendance and discipline. Prior to her time in Boulder Valley, Stephanie spent one year at Harrison School District in Colorado Springs as the CLDE Director. There she supervised and evaluated CLDE staff, was the ELL Student Data Manager, and led professional development for CLDE teachers and building administrators. Ms. Cireo spent three years at UNC in Greeley as a graduate research assistant before coming to Thompson School District, where she spent eight and a half years in various positions, such as an ELD K-12 teacher, TOSA, and ELD Summer School Coordinator. Stephanie taught culturally and linguistically diverse students at Cottonwood Plains Elementary School, supported programs within the Language, Culture, and Equity Department, facilitated teacher training on pilot curriculum for ELD Summer School, and planned and set up for ELD Summer School teachers. Her experience with ELD, combined with her administrative experience, makes her the ideal candidate for this position. Stephanie holds a Bachelor's and Master's from the University of Northern Colorado and is currently pursuing her doctoral degree in Educational Studies. Stephanie, congratulations.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and the Board, thank you so much for having me here. I am so excited to be back in Thompson School District. This is my home. I just want to say thank you. I'm very grateful to be here and looking forward to getting started with the work and serving our students and our community. So, thank you again.
Okay, we are now moving on to our Top of Thompson Awards. As a reminder, each month in Top of Thompson, we recognize this is a peer-nominated award for our three employee groups, Classified, Licensed, and A P T. And tonight, we actually have Classified and Licensed. So I'm going to invite the nominator and the nominee to please come forward, and then if you are the one who nominated, if you can please read what you had to say, and then you'll notice that there are some lucite placards. If you can please present your person with that, that would be awesome. So we'll start with Classified, and we're going to invite up Isabel Jara, or Hara, or Jara. And Isabel is a, yep, go ahead. Isabel is an E C E Lunch Aid at Peakview Academy at Conrad Ball, and she was nominated by Raquel Lawson.
Isabel is such a valuable and dedicated T S D staff member. She has dedicated over 17 years to our program. I've had the privilege of working with her for four of them. Isabel not only helps prep and serve lunch to our preschoolers, she instills the importance of healthy eating habits, table manners, and proper hygiene before and after meals. In our early childhood program, we participate in family-style meals, meaning our three-to-five year olds are taught and encouraged to serve themselves. This is done with the use of a variety of tools that may be new to many of our students, such as tongs, spatulas, drinking pitchers, containers, food pouches. So just imagine teaching 15 to 16 preschoolers how to independently serve themselves. Yes, we do go through a lot of paper towels, but it goes with the territory, and Isabel does it with patience and love. The children light up when Isabel arrives in the classroom prior to lunch. She is always greeted with hugs and excitement. This is why I believe Isabel is deserving of this recognition.
Awesome.
Congratulations. And then Isabel, don't go too far. We'll be taking pictures when we're done. Thank you. We'd next like to recognize our Licensed Top of Thompson Award winner for this month, Amber Christensen, who is an E L D teacher at Turner Middle School and Berthitt High School. And Amber was nominated by Kayana Kay. Did I do that okay, or close enough?
All right. Okay, I chose to nominate Amber Christensen because of her commitment to her students' goals and graduation. Amber is constantly collaborating with Berthitt High School counselors to make sure her students are completing their graduation requirements. This year in particular has been challenging with students skipping classes. Her goals for the second semester are to bring in people from the community to talk to these students and also set up job shadowing opportunities in order to motivate them to stay in school. Another reason I would like to nominate Amber is that she always goes above and beyond for her students and coworkers. On her days off, she'll meet with students and even buy them pizza to have study sessions and homework help. She currently teaches E L D at Turner in the mornings and Berthitt High School in the afternoons. Amber also coaches volleyball and tennis for Berthitt High and is the luck club advisor at Turner Middle School. That's why I chose Amber.
Congratulations. And don't go too far, but we'll do one more set. So I'm going to invite Mike Hausman to come forward. Mike is going to introduce, we have our Community Champion Awards. As you may recall, this is a new award we started this year to recognize champions within our community who help support the Thompson School District. So these could be nonprofits, various organizations. Earlier in my presentation, we highlighted Kids Pack, and so this is going to be a theme on that. So Mike, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Okay, so, many of you may know about the Kids Pack Program, and some of you may not. What I will say is, the Kids Pack Program has been, for many years now since its inception, has been just a tremendous partner for Thompson School District and for our students and our families. Due to the exceptional support of our local grocery partners, the Kids Pack Program is able to continue its mission of providing weekend food packs to students in need throughout Thompson School District. In addition to their support throughout the year, these partners are also instrumental in Kids Pack's ability to host its annual citywide food drives, which generate tens of thousands of pounds of food and donations for Kids Pack's important work. We greatly support their dedication to our community's youth, and we thank them for all that they do. So as Dr. Schaefer said, we have a little placard here that we would like to award to each of our grocery store partners, the stores themselves, that they can hopefully proudly display. So I'm going to read off the stores, as well as the store manager and who may be attending, and if they're not attending, that's fine. And when you hear your name, if you wouldn't mind just coming up, and I will provide you with a placard, and then we will be taking a picture afterwards, too. So first up is Sam's Club, store number 8147. The store manager is Jody Curtis. However, Lisa Colwell may also be able to be here, too. Thank you. Next is Safeway Store 0804, store director Brady Case. Is Brady with us? Come on up, Brady. Next, Safeway Store 0914, store director Autumn Owens Mathis. The assistant manager is also Zach Morgan. Are Autumn or Zach with us?
Zach.
Okay, we will provide that with them. Next, Safeway number 2915, store director Forrest Bischoff with assistant grocery manager Drew Livermore. Are Forrest and Drew here? Next, we move to King Super. So King Super's store number 74, the store manager is Mike Fedorszak, and I don't believe he's able to attend tonight, but maybe he will surprise me. Okay. Next, King Super's store manager Dustin Bentley, and I don't believe Dustin was able to attend this evening either. Hayes Barkett down in Berthitt, the store owner is Neil Hayes, and Neil had originally said he was not able to attend with us, but I'll just make sure he didn't change his mind. Walmart Supercenter number 953, the manager is Spencer Morgan. Lisa Hyatt was possibly going to be able to join us. Is Lisa here by any chance? No? Okay. And then our last partner, Walmart Supercenter number 1008, Cole Underwood, and Cole was also not able to join us. Okay. So what I will do is I will present these to Jennifer Blando. I know Jennifer is here. She's the Executive Director of Kids Pack, and I'll present those to her. Do you want to go ahead and do a photo with everybody?
Yeah, so if we can have our two Top of Thompson Award recipients, as well as the Community Champions that are with us, we'd love to do a picture with you and the board.
Yep, can you come up, please?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the rest of you. I didn't want to back in.
Can you squish this way for me a little bit, Olivia? Okay. Here we go. All right. On three. One, two, three. Good. Thank you.
So next, as you know, each month, we highlight and recognize a school here in the Thompson School District, and tonight, we have our friends from High Plains Pre-K 8. So we're going to invite High Plains to come forward with Principal Danielle Feeney. And it looks like Danielle has some guests. And actually, I'm going to invite Executive Director Theo Robison to introduce Danielle Feeney.
So, greeting Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the Board, I'm pleased here to announce Danielle Feeney, our Principal of High Plains School, so she can celebrate some of the things that are going on in our great school there.
Hello, Madam President, Board Members, and Dr. Schaefer. It's a pleasure to be here. I always love celebrating our school because it is a great school and community. We had an opportunity, Theo actually shared this with several schools last year, an opportunity to participate in the Student Space Flight Program, Experiment Program. And so we bid, and we met with Dr. Jeff Goldstein, who is the Director of the Program. We had all of our middle school staff meet and decided, you know, this is something we want to pursue. It was a huge undertaking, both in effort from students and staff, but also financially. And so we had the great support of our Dr. Schaefer, our Dr., or Theo, sorry, and our P T C O in order to pay to be in the program. It is a national program. Our kids will talk about all of it. It did involve all of our kindergarten through eighth grade because there were multiple components, and it was a great experience. So who is going to be speaking first? And this is Lindy Jones. Lindsey Jones is our STEAM coach, and she helped lead the efforts along with Pete Carlson, Erin Estevez, and Sheena Schultz, who are staff members at our school.
So, we are a STEAM school, and we like to use P B L as part of our STEAM school. And the Student Space Flight Experiments Program is a great example of taking that because they are, this is a real-world problem that they are involved in, and the whole process, the journey isn't over, and it will not be over until into next school year, late into next school year. So, things I'd like for you to keep in mind when you're listening, when you look at what we talk about as being problem-based learning through STEAM, is thinking about the design cycle that they have gone through, that they are going through with this, where they're investigating, they're designing, they're planning and designing stuff, they're creating something, and then they're going back and evaluating, which then brings them all the way back again to that investigation phase, and it's just cyclical and repeats often. And so as the students share with you what they've done, you'll see that. We can go to the next one. So the Student Space Flight Experiments Program, some details, some of our students received this letter that I want you to know. There are 38 communities globally that participate in this program, and of those 38 communities, 14,253 students were involved in it. You had to have a minimum of 100 students involved, and we included our entire K-8. Of those 14,000 students, only 38, or I'm sorry, 1,859 proposals were written for the teams. And of those 1,800 or so proposals, only 38 are making it onto the flight mission 18 to go up to the International Space Station, and they are written and done by those students. And so we have the team, so we can go to the next slide, we have the team that is representing our community, High Plains. Most of those students are here. We have a track meet tonight. So Mr. Estevez, the science teacher, is not here. He's the track, or sorry, E L A teacher. He's track coach, and one of the students is not here. And then there's also the patch design contest with art that we'll share with you. But these are those students, and they are going to tell you about their journey. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Mr. Carlson. Whoops.
My apologies, I wasn't paying attention. So my name is Mr. Carlson, Peter Carlson. I am the science teacher at High Plains, and we got to kick this off with the help of the Loveland Fire Department. It was an absolutely wonderful experience. We got to watch or drop different objects from, what was it, 105 feet, something like that, and watch them fall and see how they respond in microgravity. Microgravity being, there's still gravity there, but you're not feeling it. So if you're in free fall, you're in microgravity. So we got to go up there, we got to drop different objects. We started with like tennis balls to make sure we got on target, but I think the, one of the most amazing ones was dropping two-liter bottles filled with colored liquid, because as it dripped out of the bottle, it looked like it stopped dripping out of the bottle. So the students really got a chance to see what microgravity looked like. It's all well and good to see it on television with astronauts up in space, but they got to actually experience that in real time. So, and I'll turn it over to our amazing students.
Hello, I'm Connor Green. I am discussing the different teams in our process of writing the proposal. So in E L A class, we learned the proposal requirements and researched on our topic. In science class, we discussed the F M E chamber, which will be used to store our experiment, and learned the different types of topics for our experiment we could do. And we chose to write a proposal titled "The Effects of Microgravity on the Cucurbita Maxima Seeds," which are winter squashes. I felt very, I felt very happy because like this, it made it easier to work in different teams with like, in a team with everyone does different work, because it like, it helps get a lot done in like, a certain amount of time, I guess.
Hi, I'm Mayo Webb, and during November 7 through 13, our proposal, which was "The Effects of Microgravity on Winter Squash Seeds," was sent to the local review board out of 12 other experiments from our school chosen. The review board was made up of six researchers and six educators. They chose our experiment to be in the top three and to be sent to the international board, and I was elated that we got the chance to do this.
I'm Zachary Collins. Between December 1 through 15, we had to make critical changes to our proposal summary before moving forward to the Step Two Review Board in Washington, D.C. When we saw what changes we had to make, we were super stressed, well, we weren't super stressed about them. The changes, but super nervous about what the outcome would be. On December 22, our S C P team got selected to have our project sent to the I S S, International Space Station. When Ms. Jones announced that our team was chosen, we were all extremely excited. I'm excited because this project will give us all amazing scholarship opportunities. We are also very excited for the potential of going to Florida.
Hi, my name is Sheena Schultz. I am the very proud art teacher at High Plains, E C through eight. My job over this period was to teach our kinder through eighth graders how to design a patch that was clean, crisp, and could go into space. Just so we're clear, this is an amazing opportunity for our kids. So we spent time going over the history of the Space Lights Program. We looked over the history of the patches that other schools had done, and when we were talking about this, we made sure to, made sure to encourage the kids to be creative. And what I love about both of these designs is they did a phenomenal job at typography, which is such a huge undertaking. So we did two patch designs. We did one for K through five, and then we did it for our middle schoolers. And if you ever taught kinders, that's an interesting take, but we had a phenomenal outpouring of just buy-in to this because when I explained that their patch design would be going to space, the kids were immediately bought in. That's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and these kids will be able to say that their work was up at the International Space Station. Absolutely amazing. So when we were going over, we had this contest where everybody, we had over 300 submissions, and the K through five winner was Jackson Martin, and our middle school winner was Emerson Lamar, which were voted on by our community, their friends, their peers, and their staff members, and then sent out to the district to be voted on. So it is a huge honor to announce that So it is a huge honor to announce that these two were the winners of the Spaceflight, Student Spaceflight Experiment Program Patch.
I chose a astronaut over a spaceship because astronauts are more detailed than a spaceship. For the background, I chose the moon, sun, and earth because we can see the moon and sun from earth, and we live on earth. I am proud of how much I put a lot of detail in my astronaut.
I chose to use the colors orange, yellow, and blue because those are colors that are on the school's exterior, and I wanted to represent High Plains as much as possible. I drew an astronaut and stars because those are some things that remind me of space. And I'm really excited about my patch being chosen because it gives me a second chance to be a part of the launch.
Hi, I'm Lee Soiland. So from December 15th through April 29th, we met after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays to conduct trial experiments. We learned a lot about our experiment and made some major changes, such as the seed type from Cercubita maxima to Capsium annum, or from winter squash to sweet pepper. And we also changed the FME type from Type 2 to Type 3. So this is the FME. I'll just pass it around.
An FME is Flight Mini Experiment. That's the size that will go up.
So yeah, that's the design that we're sending up to space. Type 2 has just one clip and two sections. And in our original design, we had the seed and, yeah, we had the seed and the starter sponge in one side, and water in one, in the other side. So we decided to change it so it's water on both sides and the starter sponge in the middle so that it would have more even water, I guess. We also got a safety review form to assure NASA that our experiment will not kill everyone on the ISS. While, while doing the trial experiments, I felt very excited and sciency because I felt, because I was doing actual trial experiments rather than just talking about doing science. So it was a lot of fun.
So as you see, they haven't finalized their design yet of their proposal. They're still working on it, and they changed it dramatically. April 29th is when it's due. And then from there, they go, we go through a whole process where NASA takes over, and it could turn into a deduction process. So we're hoping that nothing gets removed and that we still have the viable experiment. But the no earlier than net launch is planned for September 17th, 2024. It's Mission 18 is the name of the mission, and it's at the SpaceX 31 Launch Complex 39A at NASA's Kennedy Aerospace in Florida, which is the exact same launch pad as all the Apollo missions. So after that, then the students still have to return the experiment with their ground control experiment and do analysis, and send in the report analysis. So it will move on much into next school year. So they're super excited. They've been doing amazing work, and we're very proud of them. Do you have any questions for us?
Are there questions from the board? Let's start down with Dawn. Do you have a question? No, okay. Amy.
I do. Congratulations. It's pretty exciting, just everything. When did you all find the time to work on the project? Was it during school, after school, both, all over the place?
So during the first part of the process, while we were working on the actual proposal, where we were writing out the experiment process and stuff, we worked on that in ELA and science classes. But when we were doing trial experiments and stuff like that, wait, no. Wait, yeah, when we were doing, what was it? Yeah, trial experiments and stuff, we met after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays from the end of school at 3:40, yeah, 3:40-ish to 5 o'clock. We extended that a bit during like the last few days because we were running out of time. We extended to like 5:30, so yeah, that was a lot of fun.
Stu?
Keeping in mind when you started and having an idea of when this will be finished, how long have you actually worked on this project? I'm not, not asking you for total number of hours that each of you has invested, but in terms of calendar time, how, how long has High Plains been working on this amazing project?
We started in May and talked about whether or not we went and had a meeting. Then over the summer, there was a lot of working on writing the proposal just to get accepted into the program because we had a guarantee of funds and all of that. So there was some background work done there. Then early August, that first week back of TENS Week, the entire middle school team spent about two hours getting the training from SSCP program and the emails. The review board was, Barb Cruz was one of the members of our review board, and that was over the weekend, emailing and communicating through Google Meets with all of them. And then we have been, the planning behind it, just, it's been ongoing, and it's just continuing. Yeah.
That's amazing. Thank you, Lyndi.
The students that are on the team, are they seventh graders? So if they're there again next year? Or are some of them going to be on to high school and will have to come back? Can they come back and help, or how will that work?
So all the teams were grade-level teams. So they were all on the same grade level. And it so happened that the team that was chosen is a seventh-grade team. So they will be here next year to be able to continue with that. Yeah.
Nancy?
I just, I think this is a great project. And I would also like to know, out of all the squash variety, why did you pick the winter?
You guys chose it, why? Remember?
We chose it because we wanted to do like pumpkin at first, but pumpkin seeds are way too big for the FME size. So then we went down to squash seeds, and winter squash was the first one.
That makes sense.
We're now doing pepper because the squash seed was too big, so we only could use one squash seed, which gave us a potential of having, like, it not germinating. And yeah, so then we did multiple pepper seeds.
Oh, that's, that's one of the things we learned in the trial experiments is that because the seed was so big, it had a hard time growing in the tube because you guys also have a tube. It's like skinny. So we chose, we switched to smaller seeds to make it easier, to make it easier for them to grow and germinate in such a small, confined space.
Alexandra? Yeah, Denise? Okay, thank you, you guys.
Students and staff, we're very proud of you, and we would love to take a picture with you if we can. All right, can you, let's slide this way a little bit. There we go. All right, are you ready? On three. One, two. Thank you. So the final portion of the superintendent's report tonight is an athletics and activities update. So I'm going to invite Kevin Clark to come forward. He's on his way up, and he has some exciting updates for us.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, thank you so much for having me this evening. Yeah, we'll just dive into it. A lot of exciting things to celebrate this winter. Connection to Strive 2025 is just to highlight some of our students and the performances they had this winter. On February 14th, we got to, due to Canvas Credit Union, one of our partners, secured Canvas Stadium for us, and Jeremy Blum, one of our Thompson School District graduates, and former Olympian, college All-American, NFL draft pick, spoke to about 400 students and staff who were selected by their athletic coaches, that we had a leadership day, and he was our keynote speaker there. And then Dr. Schaefer had mentioned Education Day at CSU, where we had roughly 1,000 students and staff attend that. Upcoming events that we'd like to just put on your radar. Rolled it out this week. On Tuesday, May 14th, we're going to have our first Elementary Unified Field Day. This will take place at Ray Patterson Stadium and the field and track at Thompson Valley High School. First year, we're going to start small and see what happens, and excited to get our elementary students exposed to some, connect them to Special Olympics at, at a younger age. Also, potentially, we are in the process of working with the city of Loveland to possibly pilot middle school golf next school year. So as we look at all of our athletics and activities, I'm going to fly through these tonight and just highlight one. You've got the notes here, and the reason why is the grand finale is going to look a little different tonight, but I'm excited for what we have in store for you. So athletic, or sorry, activities at Berthold High School, we'll highlight that they finished third at the State Knowledge Bowl. In athletics, they had two state runners-up, one in wrestling at heavyweight Donovan Mann and Corinne Roberts in the 100 breaststroke. Loveland High School, their activities that we're going to highlight tonight is, they are sending three students to Nationals for speech and debate. And we also found out last week, Andy Little, the athletic and the director and assistant principal, was named the Rocky Mountain North District Athletic Director of the Year through the Speech and Debate Association. Athletically, Loveland High School did have two state champions in wrestling, Lexi Lopez and Sierra Moskowsky. Mountain View, to kick off Inclusion Week, they did a school-wide assembly where they had a student versus staff unified basketball game. They featured a unified drum line and a unified cheer performance. So they did that to kick off Inclusion Week. Athletically, and we'll recognize him at the end here tonight, but we have in attendance with us tonight a two-time state wrestling champion, Isaiah Harrison. And we'll bring him up here at the end of the performance. And yeah, he represented very well at Ball Arena in February. Thompson Valley, we'll skip the activity slide, Lorley. We'll come back to that one here in one second. And then athletically, for Thompson Valley, they did have two wrestlers who were state runners-up in Jackson Riordan and Kellen Engelhardt. So if we go back to the activities, the, kind of the grand finale that we have in attendance with us tonight is another state champion from the speech and debate world. We have Coach Dan Lutz and Senior Jaden Fitzpatrick. And Jaden, if you want to come on up here. Jaden was the Foray State Champion in informative speaking, and she has a 10-minute speech, so I'm kind of giving her my minutes tonight. And when I tell you the topic, it's kind of, kind of make you chuckle, but when you hear the performance, it's, it's going to resonate, I think, with a lot of people here tonight. But with the topic of online dating. Jaden, there you go.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I'd like to just talk to you a little bit about what Jaden will be performing as she sets up because she has to set up her visual aids. I've been the speech and debate coach at Thompson Valley High School for the last 24 years, working with Jaden now for her fourth year in a row. She's a graduating senior. And as was mentioned, she took first place at the Foray State Tournament in informative speaking. There are about a dozen different events that you can possibly compete in. There's a wide variety of them. She competes in the public speaking elements. There are the debate elements, there are the performance elements. And what happens with informative speaking is the individual, Jaden in this case, chooses the topic that they want. She then researches it, writes the speech herself, memorizes it, creates all the visual aids herself, and then presents it. So what you're going to see is truly her efforts. You'll notice during the speech, she cites her sources, so you can't just make things up. As fun as that would be. So as Jaden gets the last few pieces in place here, I'm going to turn it over to her again. This is a timed 10-minute speech. So the judges will be looking at how well she incorporates her visual aids, how well her speech fits together, and how smoothly it all runs. And then I'll turn it over to Jaden for the last couple of minutes here to get ready and present.
Thank you for your patience, almost there. All right, is my audience ready?
Yeah, we are.
All right, then we'll go ahead and get sarnishes. Over the past couple of years, my mom has started online dating, and how my animal's track puts the best in this export post. Dating apps aren't as bad as people claim. They're worse. In case you haven't witnessed the travesty that is online dating, we're going to take a look at a few dating profiles from Tinder. The iconic dating app, where you swipe right for people you like and left on those who don't. First up, we have Cheyenne. I like taking long walks on the beach with my boyfriend until the acid wears off. Then I realize I'm tracking a stolen mannequin around a McDonald's. Yes. In here, photography. Don't buy gold gate whitening toothpaste, it says guaranteed whiteness in 14 days. It's been two weeks, and I'm still Asian. As much as online dating seems like a joke, new researches have found that about a third of all adults in half have never married. Those under 30 and lesbian or bisexual adults in the U.S. have all attempted online dating. And over half of them reported having positive experiences. It's clear that there's much to be known about online dating, and it's not always as it seems. So today, we are going to first swipe left and take a look at online dating's history. Then swipe right and examine how well it really works. Finally, we'll put down our devices to investigate the societal impact of dating online. One of the first resemblances of online dating dates back to the 19th century. When men in the U.S. moving from the east to the west were realized they forgot something. Women! To address this issue, many started using mail-order marriages where both men who they could, for a small price, paid to place an ad for themselves in the newspaper. Tells New York Times bestselling author Chris Hens. These ads could both describe themselves as well as the type of partner they were looking for. One picky and somewhat disturbing example is, quote, "I want to know some pretty girl of 17 to 20 years. I am 29, 5'9" of blonde. I can laugh for 15 minutes, and I want some pretty girl to laugh with me." The next progression towards online dating wasn't until 1959, when we basically saw online dating without the online part. According to a timeline given by eHarmony, two Stanford students had some people fill out these kinds of punch card questionnaires that were then processed by this old giant IBM computer to match 49 men with 49 women based on the likeness of their answers. eHarmony states, quote, "Though the idea was never commercialized, this is noted as the first attempt at a matchmaking service." Then from the '90s to the 2000s, the creation and development of the internet, instant messaging, and smartphones allowed for the final fabrication of what we now know as true online dating. The profiles from old personal ads and questionnaires like those from Stanford were morphed into digital form. from Stanford were morphed into digital form. Creating sites many still use today, like eHarmony, launched in 2000 to Tinder in 2012. Over time, online dating's popularity has only grown, but it still begs the question, is it any better than traditional dating? I'll be suggesting this as the next Lincoln Douglas debate topic, but in the meantime, it's our job to swipe right and examine both sides of this argument. Those who support online dating claim it is easier to find your perfect match online due to the vast number of options and effective ways of narrowing them down. One such way is choosing the dating platform that best suits you, as there are many different ones to choose from. A part of the queer community, choose her or binder. Those looking for a hookup, you bought an adult friend finder. Bloom free singles for that. If you're a farmer, another promising aspect of online dating is that it's proven to initiate longer-lasting relationships. According to a University of Chicago study, of nearly 20,000 respondents across the U.S., 45% of marriages formed between 2005 and 2012 started online. And those who met online were 20% less likely to have broken up since marriage. At the same time, though, there are still many skeptics who question searching for a significant other on the web. First off, you can't even trust the validity of what people include in their dating profiles. In a study led by communications science professor Dr. Catalina Toma, 81% of participants lied on their dating profiles. Most lies were told about age, height, and weight. While most of the lies were minor, there were always a few extreme cases, too, like when somebody's profile photo looks like this, but in reality, it looks more like this. If you use more common and trademark algorithms, online dating sites used to magically connect users are about as effective as playing spin the bottle with a bunch of strangers. Well, Liesel Sharabi, Associate Professor of Communication at Arizona State University, concluded in her own study that using algorithms to connect users was no more effective than users self-selecting their own dates. In fact, people thinking that these algorithms worked was the only factor that increased the success of the first in person dating. As you can see, there is still no consensus on the effectiveness of online dating, but now that we are better at more than its potential usefulness, finally time to put down our devices and take a look at the societal impacts of dating online. For starters, online dating has facilitated an incredible number of successful relationships, according to Stanford sociologist Michael Rosenbaum. We found in 2017 that 39% of heterosexual couples met online, and suggests this number is even higher for those in the queer community. But with these desired outcomes being produced by online dating, the dangers posed by these platforms are often overlooked. Columbia Journal Investigations, or CJI, tells the story of 53-year-old Susan Devaux, who was matched with Mark Papanicell in 2016 on dating site planning a binge. After one of their dates in 2017, Papanicell, great, Devaux. While he was later convicted, the trauma she endured led to a severe drinking binge later that year, ultimately causing her death. CJI initiated a survey of over 1,200 women who had used a dating site in the past 15 years, and found that more than a third had been sexually assaulted by someone that they met via online dating, which is nearly the 36% chance women have of being a victim of sexual violence in their entire lifetime, according to a 2010 survey. Another disappointing misuse of dating online is described by CBC. Just last year, 60-year-old Calgary woman fell for Carl Peterson, whose fake romantic charm, lost her nearly half a million dollars. League expert Irina Manata explains in the same article that online dating scams are especially challenging to identify due to the intense emotions involved. Pew Research Center found that about a half of all online dating users have at some point seen a scam, and it only takes once to be deceived by a scam and have your entire life changed forever. The final narrative we'll be looking at is that of gay Moroccan men whose country has banned homosexual practices. An Insider article tells of how a Moroccan woman on her Instagram feed explained to her followers how they could create fake profiles on gay dating apps like binder to out their Moroccan users. One gay Moroccan man who fell victim to something like this and had his photos exposed to online via his profile told Insider, quote, "I'm not just afraid. I'm certain I will be kicked out immediately, or worse, beaten up." Similar situations have arose across the world, putting members of the queer community in even further danger. These three stories show how online dating is being used with evil intentions. While they do not dominate our entire perspective of it, it is necessary that we keep them in mind as we evaluate the depths at which online dating is affecting us all. In the end, it is clear that there is far more to online dating than just dating online. Today, we learned about its unique history, broke down how well profiles and platforms work, and finally saw how online dating is impacting humanity. Going forward, we must ensure that online dating is a matter at the forefront of our minds due to its ever-pesting implications. From entertaining Tinder profiles, like we looked at earlier, to dangerous utilizations, online dating is an extremely multifaceted issue that requires careful examination to formulate an opinion on. But no matter your view of online dating, remember that the goal of it, like any kind of dating, is to find you someone you can act with, can grow with, and ultimately, love. Because in the end, that is all any of us ever want, to be loved. Thank you.
So at this time, if we could have Isaiah Harrison from Mountain View come up here. And Jaden, if we could, if you guys would take a picture with our state champions, and one more round of applause for Isaiah and Jaden, please. Why Jaden's tearing down. Any questions for Isaiah as he conquered his second state championship this year?
One more for me. What do you consider your secret to success?
Just hard work and stuff.
Are you a senior?
No, I'm a junior.
We'll see you again next year, then.
So I just committed to Wyoming. They're actually a Big 12 school and D1.
I asked Barb if I could make one comment before we move on. It's really exciting to have these students with us who are excelling in so many different ways. But it's important that we keep in mind the adults who are part of the story. The gentleman who's been the speech and debate coach for 24 years, I don't know if Isaiah's wrestling coach is here or not, but our students excel because of their immense talent and commitment, and also because of the tutelage, the inspiration that they receive from the adults who are part of this picture as well. So I just think it's important that we remember them as well. And will you join me in applauding them as well?
Okay, we will move on to our board committee reports. And I asked the board to share about some things that they attended, whether it be an event or a play, or something that they went to since Christmas time, basically, or the last couple of months, to share with you. The other report is posted on the board notes. So let's start down with, well, let's start this way. So Denise, do you have anything you want to share?
Certainly. I was able to attend both the Freaky Friday performance at Thompson Valley and the SpongeBob the Musical at Mountain View recently. Caught a track made or two and seen Berthoud, Mountain View, and Thompson Valley in action. And then was able to volunteer for Kids Pack. It was just really heartwarming to see so many people donating. I went out and I was like, oh, you know, a couple people will. But it was amazing how generous the community was. Yeah, I mean, that's funny for me. It's a long...
Unfortunately, my life has been such that I have not been able to attend much of anything, but I am sure they have all been wonderful.
I have a couple of things. So we went to Lago Vista again, Dr. Schaefer and Amy and I. And this time, the topic that was brought up took me a little bit by surprise. They were very, one mom was very adamant about if we would please enforce the dress code at high school. Some of the high school students may not agree with that, but I thought that was a great idea. But so I thought that was a good conversation. But then the other event that I went to was really informative. I think it was in February. Brittany Fryer came up and invited us to all go to the Police Citizens Academy. There was a speaker that was going to be there. And the information that she provided was just, I had no idea. Her organization is called OneChance2GrowUp.org. And she just really went into how much marijuana has changed and talked about the effects on students. Like even when the students smoke marijuana now, they will, they can lose up to eight IQ points. There's a much larger risk of psychosis now because the potency of THC is so much more than what some of us more seasoned people might remember from the '60s, '70s. And the kids just really think that it's harmful. It was a really good presentation, and I think it would be just something great if we could figure out how to have it at a study session, because there was so much information in how it's really impacting kids with the number of ER visits and increased suicide, just many different things because of the way they've developed it and bioengineered. But that was a really good event that I went to.
I'll go last, so Stu.
Well, I also attended some of the spring theatrical offerings. I also saw SpongeBob at Mountain View and Freaky Friday at Thompson Valley, as well as Charlotte's Web at Berthoud. And I was looking forward to seeing Once Upon a Mattress at Loveland High School. I was scheduled to go and had tickets for the Thursday night performance, which was the only one that was canceled due to snow, so I didn't get to see them perform. But again, the performances were excellent, and kudos to the adults who are part of those presentations. Let me tell you just a little bit about another event that I attended that involved students. I attended the Unified Basketball Game at Berthoud High School in which the team challenged the staff. And it was great fun. It was very inspiring. And as the students of the high school who were spectators at the event sat in the stands, gave the teachers a really hard time, razzed them when they missed shots, made cat calls when they did make shots, you know, saying things like grandstander and things like that, applauding uproariously for the unified kids when they were playing. It was a wonderful experience. It's one that's important not only for the unified students to know that they have the support of their fellow students at a high school, but it's also important for the students who are part of regular education to be able to show that support to people who are performing sometimes with a variety of disabilities. It's a very important part of the growing up experience. So the plays were great, the unified basketball game was great. Anytime I have an opportunity to watch kids and hang out with kids, it's a highlight.
I wanted to elaborate a little more. I'm the board representative for CAC this year, and one of the highlights of this last meeting was learning about something called Project Search, which is what the district is starting. And it is a school-to-work transition program for young adults with ADD, so intellectual and developmental disabilities. And it's a very robust program. We are just starting it up here in Thompson, partnering with Banner. Or we've had it up here, but partnering with Banner. What struck me is that, you know, I'm always fascinated and supportive of real-world situations and things that our kids can learn from. And this is a program for, you know, employment for our students. And a stat that was given was that they had 99 students in North Colorado go through program with Columbine Health Services. Today, 24 of them are still employed. To me, that's pretty spectacular. And that's in healthcare. And, you know, typically, that takes the stereotype away from our kids with ADD, you know, bagging groceries and stuff like that. So working in healthcare, it's pretty phenomenal. And then one story that was just extremely touching was there was a program in Cincinnati, and a mom had just given birth to a child who has Down Syndrome. And the mom was, you know, sort of thinking, oh, my gosh, what's my life going to be like? And a student from the search program came in to restock her room. And so the student has Down Syndrome, had Down Syndrome, and was, you know, restocking her room after just giving birth to her child with Down Syndrome. And it was at that moment that that mom, you know, could see that her child, you know, could have gainful employment. So just those, I'm really excited for Thompson to be, you know, embarking on this search program, partnering with Banner. So there should be more to come on that. So thanks.
So it's a big night for Kids Pack Love. I was able to go to two of their events this month, so I did the food drive. And it is really fantastic in addition to the generosity and just how fun it is to get to meet everybody and share the program, because it is special and something that, like, we really do only have here. And it came from, you know, a great need that somebody saw that they said, we want to fill it. And the rest of the community went, yeah, we would like to help with that. And they do it every year. The other one is the launch of the Kid Pack facility. So in all the years and all the thousands of pounds and all of the amazing work that they do week after week, they've been going from place to place. And I don't even know how they made some of it work. Their newest spot for now has been a great, beautiful In their newest spot for now has been a great, beautiful spot that was too small before they moved in. So it was a great spot, just not big enough. And so it's really exciting to know that they have a home. And this community has supported our kids that way. And then Tom and Corinne and all of the amazing people in our community who've been called out tonight have done their part. I will say, I don't remember. I think I was on, worked on Saturday afternoon. And by Saturday afternoon, it's been going long enough with the food drive that you're like, ooh, what's going to happen? And it didn't feel like, I don't know. It just was like, oh, I don't know. And so I was very excited to wake up on Monday morning and see that the biggest goal we've ever had was exceeded by over 10% this year. And so that's really great because I was nervous. When Tom and Corinne were nervous, I got nervous. I was like, oh, yeah, what if? I don't know. And our community showed up in a big way and said, you know what? We would like to make sure that kids are not hungry. And it's great that we have so many people who are doing that. And we have several people who shared their stories of how that program helped them to get through tough times. And many of them were adults now in our community. So, you know, it's cool to see somebody who, you know, one of those teens, hungry teens, and they're always hungry, but some are especially hungry. It's really great to hear stories of what that meant to somebody, you know, years later who's now working and how they were the first people to say, what do you got? I'm on it. I want to give back. And I just love that. So thanks for everything, Kids Pack.
I agree with that. One of my committees is the Thompson Education Foundation. And so this past week, we started with the Project Prom. So what I want to share about is Thursday night was the opening night, and it was just for Thompson students who are going to the prom. And it was amazing because there were, it's in the old Kids Pack, no, 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 Gap, Baby Gap store out at the Centerra. And so it has dressing rooms for them all to try on their dresses. But there were over 2,000 dresses that have been donated by people from the community or stores that have chosen to donate or outside of our community that they got phone calls from somebody and said, we have some dresses. So there were lots of dresses. We had, and that was just the opening night, the night I worked. And it was during spring break. So we were sort of concerned about whether there would be a lot. But we had over 45 girls. It opened at like five and we closed at like seven. And there were only over 45 girls, kids, not necessarily all, that came in and got their prom dresses. And they could leave with their dress. They could leave with shoes if they could find shoes that fit. They could find jewelry. They could find a wrap. And it didn't cost them a penny. And these are kids that otherwise probably wouldn't be able to go to prom because our parents couldn't any up for the cost of what that is. So it was just an amazing experience. It goes on again this weekend and I think again next weekend. And it opens up to all the schools after, I mean, now. So anybody can go that's going to one of the high school proms. And it's just, it's heartwarming to watch them leave and know that they are excited and decked out and whatever they need. So it was well worth working for it. All right, we will move now on to public comments. So Dawn is going to read a little blurb about it. And we have a couple of students that will go first, and then we'll take the rest of them.
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular business, I'm sorry, board meeting for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. If there is a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. So I will, when you start speaking, I will turn this on and you'll get a green light. You'll have two and a half minutes before it turns yellow and then 30 seconds to wrap up before it starts beeping at you. First up, we have Sarah Rathones. Am I saying that right? Did our students forget and leave all at the same time?
They might be tired.
Yeah, I know. It's still a busy week. Okay, Sarah, if you are here, we'll come back to you. Next, we have Audrey Roth.
Do you start it before or after I start? Okay. Hello, my name is Audrey Roth. Or no.
Hold on just a minute. She's got to get it going.
All right. Okay. Hello, my name is Audrey Roth. Currently, I attend Turner Middle School as an eighth grader. While I've loved going there for the past three years, one small flaw has stuck out to me the whole time. The flaw is the passing period times. Oh, crap. Oh, at Turner, we only get four minutes to pass. And while we do have a small school, it doesn't change the amount of time each student takes to fill up their water bottles, go to the bathroom, or go to their lockers. On average, a student takes three to five minutes to go to the bathroom. I know this because I'm always looking at the sign-out papers in our classes and I know how long it takes me to go. Now, this is an average of four minutes to go to the bathroom, which is the entire passing period. Plus only having two bathrooms per gender with three stalls. And people doing non-bathroom things in the bathroom makes it harder for you to get a stall and go. This basically makes going to the bathroom in this time impossible, especially because we have to go to our lockers regardless of if we have to do anything else because we're not allowed to bring backpacks to our classes. And we have to have, we have a lot of things that we have to bring to each class, which nobody wants to take. So going to our lockers can take one to four minutes as well, just depending on how crowded the hallways are and all that type of stuff. And even having, we still have one more thing that we have to do, which is filling up our water bottles, which water is extremely necessary because we're humans and we need water. So there are three water fountains in our school and about 120 students per grade and some passing times with multiple grades, which makes those lines super long. And sometimes you'll have to go to class without water or you'll just have to be late to class, which is not good. So why should we be expected to do all these three things in one passing period and be on time to class? At my school, we have a new tardy policy. So being late to class basically means you get a lunch detention. So nobody wants that. So we're not late to class. So we end up skipping having to go to the bathroom, skipping getting water and just ending up going to our locker and going to class. So my proposal for this to change it is make two passing periods a day, six, seven, or eight minutes, putting those passing periods between when you have a block and a block, putting that passing period there or putting it on, from the class after lunch to the next class because you need time for your food to digest. So another problem I see with these times that I didn't want to argue because I don't have any experience with it is in high school because they only get five minutes and they have a way bigger building. And that is all my time. So thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Are you resetting?
Yeah, somebody messed with it.
Oh.
Just saying, whoever that was, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to give Sarah another chance. Going once. Okay.
She must.
So then, next up, we have Colorado's Teacher of the Year, Jessica May. I'm sure that's what everybody says every time they say your name, I hope.
I was just thinking about you, wondering how your year was going. So it's nice to see you.
It's crazy good. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, members of the cabinet, and others in the audience. My name is Jessica May, family and consumer science teacher at Turner Middle School in Berthoud. I was homegrown here in Thompson School District. And this is proudly my 21st year of teaching here. Members of the Thompson Education Association are committed to helping create a great public school for every student. Great public schools include a safe environment for teaching and learning as well as a commitment from administration, teachers, classified staff, students, and families to create that safe environment. This evening, you will be presented with statements regarding student behaviors occurring in our schools that are interfering with our goal of having a safe learning and teaching environment. The statements have been signed by more than 500 educators here in Thompson School District. We have taken this action because negative student behavior has become so pervasive and severe that families are leaving the district. Staff, both licensed and classified, are leaving or considering leaving the district and the profession. Negative student behavior is having a huge impact on staff and our students and our schools. And it's an urgent problem deserving of urgent action. The issues related to negative student behavior are complex and systemic. The solutions must be thoughtful and systemic. The system includes educators, administration, families and parents, policymakers like legislatures and boards of education, and also our community and our students. The administration and policymakers in TSD have taken steps and actions to help make our schools great and safe for students. Respectfully, the current steps and actions taken have been unsuccessful and more, and different steps and actions need to be taken. TEA members as well as non-members, along with leadership, are committed to being part of the solution to the issue of negative student behavior. DEA members are prepared to work with people in all parts of the education system to create safe schools, schools that have policies and procedures that are effective in helping manage negative student behavior. Thank you for hearing our concerns tonight. And most importantly, we really look forward to working together to create safer, more effective schools. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
That was awesome timing. That's how it's done. Toni Eckley.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Schaefer, board members, cabinet, guests. My name is Toni Eckley. I live here in Loveland. I have been a teacher in the district for seven years. I'm here to read a statement about student behavior that has been signed by more than 295 elementary educators, including teachers and classified staff. We want all students to receive the education that meets their individual needs and allows all students to achieve at their highest level. Students' behaviors that are happening in our classrooms, in our hallways, in our lunchrooms, and on our playgrounds include the following: disrespectful behavior, disruptive behavior, violent behavior, uncooperative behavior, behavior that impacts other students' sense of safety, and behavior that impacts learning in a negative way. These behaviors have a negative impact on student learning often. Due to this type of behavior, students are fearful and distracted, and students are influenced by this behavior. The systems in place are not timely, not effective, and are inconsistent. This means these systems are not effectively changing the behaviors in a way that leads to our goal of a great education for all of our students. We believe that consequences and punishment are not the same. Consequences should be such that they lead to behaviors becoming more conducive to successful learning. We recognize that many of the negative behaviors are impacted by the trauma that students experience or have experienced. Thus, the systemic solutions should involve parents, teachers, classified staff, administrators, and the Board of Education members. Thank you.
Richie Lynn.
Good evening, President Cruz, Superintendent Schaefer, board members, cabinet, guests, and community members. My name is Richie Lynn. I'm a business and marketing teacher over at Loveland High School. I'm here to read a statement about the student behavior that has been, and that statement has been signed by more than 225 secondary staff, teachers, and classified staff. We want all and each student to receive the education that meets their individual needs and allows all students to achieve at their highest level. Students' behaviors that are happening in our classrooms, in our hallways, and in our lunchrooms include the following: disrespectful behavior, disruptive behavior, violent behavior and language, uncooperative behavior, behavior that impacts other students and staff's sense of safety, behavior that impacts learning in a negative way. Some examples of these above behaviors: vulgar and profane language in the hallways and classrooms, student fights that frequently require external law enforcement intervention, bullying and harassment of staff, emotional and physical harm to staff, hard objects thrown at staff, verbal, nonverbal, and physical, sexual behavior directed by students toward other students and staff. These behaviors have negative impact on student learning. Often, due to this type of behavior, other students are fearful, distracted, and negatively influenced. These behaviors contribute to our declining enrollment and declining staff retention. We believe that consequences and punishment are not the same. Consequences should be such that they lead to behaviors becoming more conducive to successful learning. The systems in place are ineffective, inconsistent, and not timely. This means that these systems are not effectively changing the behaviors in a way that leads to our goal of a great education for all and each of our students. At the secondary level, because students travel to multiple classes per day and teachers don't have all students in their classes, coordinated communication between administrators and teachers regarding behavior and safety plans is a challenge. Larger class sizes also impact educators' ability to identify the function of student behavior effectively. We recognize that many of the negative behaviors are in the least, are at least partially a function of the trauma that students experience or have experienced. Thus, the systemic solutions should involve parents, teachers, classified staff, administrators, and the Board of Education. Also, I would like to present to you the signed copies of those.
Nancy Wolfgang.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, board and cabinet members and guests. My name is Dr. Nancy Anderson Wolfgang. I teach music grades K through 5 here in the district. And I am here to talk about how negative behaviors affect teachers and their ability to teach. On November 6, 2023, I had to pull a second grader off another second grader because in his own words, he was trying to kill him. In the struggle, I ended up getting punched in the left orbital socket four times before I could reach my radio and call for help. The whole class watched the whole thing in terror. Help came within seconds and the crisis team took over. I was asked if I was okay, and then the day went on as normal. After all, there were more students to teach. However, I was far from okay. By that evening, my face was very swollen and I had a terrible headache. It felt like air was escaping out from the bottom of my eye. The next day, I went to the doctor and I was told there was so much swelling, air was being pushed out of my tear duct. My face remained swollen for almost two weeks to the point of my skin starting to split over my eyebrow. It took another two weeks for my eyelid to return to normal. And when I am tired, the eyelid still sags, which is noticeable today if you look at me straight on. The next day, the student was back in my class as though nothing had happened. There was no restorative justice conversation. I just had to deal with it. I found myself being surprised that I was having such a hard time dealing with it. It shouldn't have been a surprise. I was assaulted. I was assaulted. But I ended up having to take days off out of my own leave to try and deal with the trauma that I had experienced. Finally, with the support of the union, I filed a formal grievance. I was nervous about doing that because I knew there would be repercussions, even though they are not legally allowed. My fears were made real when my actions were brought up in my mid-year review. It was a month to the day before someone in the district reached out. At my other school, there was a group of students that were holding their grade level and the teachers in terror. Their disrespectful and disruptive behavior was out of control. This behavior included violence toward other students and teachers, and parents were actually keeping their students home because they were so scared to go to school. I want to acknowledge that the district and site staff were working very hard to correct the situation. This behavior continued into all of the specials classes. It made for very unpleasant and frustrating days, and I dreaded having to take those I've been a teacher for almost 30 years, and I was informed by my principals that I was being non-renewed, and I believe that this is 100% because I spoke out about behaviors that were not acceptable. What we are currently doing isn't working, and I would strongly urge the Board, district, administrators, teachers, families, and communities to have hard, honest conversations about what to do differently to protect not only students, but teachers too. Thank you.
Amanda Washburn.
I wasn't aware that I was speaking.
Oh, well, you don't have to. I'm not trying to make you. I don't know how your name got on here. Somebody, somebody must have said, thought you had something great to say. Sarah Moner?
Well, maybe they thought that was sign-in.
Maybe you thought that was a sign-in sheet when you came in. And, yeah, that might be what it was.
No pressure.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, well, then, if you really are not wanting to speak, then we are done, unless Sarah Rathone is somewhere in the building.
We do have one call in, call in, I think.
This is Lori Vista Ward. I live in Loveland, and my comments are regarding the rogue and unethical behavior of one of the members of the Board of Education. On Monday, Director Rumfelt testified at the Colorado Legislature against a bill titled "Concerning Non-Legal Name Changes for Students in Schools." She identified herself as a member of the T S D Board and stated that she was speaking for herself. This bill would require public schools to use a student's preferred name, and deems the refusal to do so a form of discrimination. It was brought forward to the Legislature by the Colorado Youth Advisory Council, who are students themselves. Addressing a child by their preferred name is a sign of respect, and the very least a school employee can do to create a safer environment for students. As the parent of a trans child, I know how it hurt my son when one of his teachers continued to call him by his birth name instead of the name he had chosen to reflect his identity. Why would a school board member insist on continuing this practice when it both goes against school district policy and is harmful to children? Secondly, Director Rumfelt has started hosting a series of town hall meetings with constituents, which can be a valuable service. However, the one I attended was co-hosted by her husband, Robert, and he provided information and answers to questions as he sat by his wife's side. The next town hall is scheduled for this Saturday at a business owned and operated by a member of the Rumfels' immediate family and where Robert Rumfelt is employed. The agenda includes an explanation of the School Finance Act, budget history in Thompson School District, staffing and salary levels, and Q and A. I have asked Director Rumfelt if there will be staff in attendance to vouch for her data, but she has not responded. Director Rumfelt, herself a financial professional, has stated that she cannot understand the district budget. Her personal financial history leads me to believe that this is true and to distrust her interpretation of facts and figures in the budget. Perhaps Mr. Rumfelt will again be lending his expertise. Director Rumfelt is reminded that she is but one member of a board that acts as a body. She has been engaged in a decade-long assault on Thompson School District, its students, and its employees. I urge her to prayerfully reconsider her position on the Board of Education. Thank you. I can be contacted at lorivista ward at gmail dot com.
All right, this concludes public comment. Thank you. All right, we are moving on. Do we need to get up at all? Are you guys okay? Everybody okay? Okay, we're going to keep going, then. We're going to move on to the action consent items, and these are the items that we had presented to us at our study session. And so we're, they're kind of, we were front-loaded with a lot of information. We had an opportunity to ask a lot of the questions. So we're going to, this is a group of topics that we're going to go ahead and approve after I read the list. So the list is fairly lengthy, not as long as it was in February, I think, was when we were out at Riverview. It was so long. So it's item, thanks for coming, you guys. 6.1 is approval of the personnel extra duty and coaching recommendations. 6.2, approval of the second reading policy IKF graduation requirements. 6.3, approval of the second reading policy GBBD, which is staff fringe benefits. 6.4 is the approval of the Joint Insurance Committee, JIC, insurance renewal recommendation. 6.5 is the approval of the Joint Insurance Committee, JIC, district forfeiture recommendation. 6.6 is the approval of Ferguson High School calendar variance for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026. And 6.7 is the approval of the youth shelter name. So if there isn't any discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve all of these listed items.
So moved.
So we have from Dawn, and I need a second from Stu. So Dawn and Stu. Question?
Was this not where we're going to begin? I'm not continuing to pull anything.
I assumed I would have been informed if something was going to, what did you want pulled? Was there something you wanted pulled?
Normally, we do it at this time.
I assumed that I had been told. No, it's okay. Is there something you want pulled?
I just want to pull the personnel recommendation.
Is it because you have a question? For, for Bill? Because I, is it because there's so many on the list that we're being?
Barb, with all due respect, I am able to pull this from the consent agenda.
Okay, we will pull, we will pull the approval of the personnel, extra duty and coaching recommendations, and it will become an item on then the discussion action. Okay, Bill, so we'll call you up then. Okay. All right, are there, is, so I had a first from Dawn and a second from Stu. Yes, we will be renumbering the items.
Do you want me to do that real quick?
Sure.
Okay. 6.1 is approval of second reading IKF graduation requirements. 6.2 is approval of second reading policy J, I'm sorry, GBBD, staff fringe benefits. 6.3 is approval of Joint Insurance Committee, JIC, insurance renewal recommendation. 6.4 is approval of Joint Insurance Committee, JIC, district forfeiture recommendation. 6.5 is approval of Ferguson High School calendar variance for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026. And 6.6 is approval of youth shelter name.
Thank you, Dawn. All right, so we have a first and we have a second. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled? Any further discussion? Okay, Laura Lee, I would you please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes for those six items, I think is what there are now. All right, so we'll move on then to discussion action. And 7.1 will be the approval of the arbitrator report, and 7.2 will be the approval of the personnel. So.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Seabrook, Chief Human Resources Officer. The arbitrator report and recommendation, we've had previous conversations on 221 and 36, and we had a great discussion at the last meeting. So the recommendation to the Board of Education to accept arbitrator report pursuant to Section 8-5-5 of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Board of Education and the Thompson Education Association. At this time, I'll open it for any discussions before the vote.
Yeah, there are questions regarding that. All right, so I will take a motion to move this to a voting item. Do I need to do that or not? Just move it? Okay, it's already in position from the first. Okay, so I, I need a motion to approve the arbitrator's report.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stu. So Dawn and Stu again. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
All right, and Bill, Nancy has asked that you pull, that you address the approval of the personnel.
Okay.
I'm waiting to find out.
So, or presented?
Yeah, explain.
I pulled it simply because I was taken a bit by surprise, by, excuse me, by what I heard this evening, and so while I understand this isn't the appropriate time to go into a discussion of that type of thing, I do, I do feel uncomfortable voting yes, and I understand that I'll probably be the only person voting no, but that's what I'm going to do. So I really don't know that there's much you can explain with that, Dr. Seabrook, because I know that it's not
Right.
...in this environment the appropriate way, but I don't feel like I can vote yes for this recommendation.
So we, apparently, we have some clarification of, Amy, you want to ask what your?
I guess respectfully, Nancy, I don't, could you elaborate? I don't understand, based on what happened tonight, you don't feel comfortable, like, what does that, I mean, these are hires and separations for positions.
Right, and as the Board of Education, this is one of our jobs, and based upon what I heard from Nancy Wolfgang, and again, I know we can't go into all the details, but I'm still not comfortable voting yes for the recommendations. It's as simple as that.
I just need a second here.
Barb, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely. I'm just kind of looking.
Nancy, you're not comfortable voting to approve hiring and termination for staff in general as a result of what the commenter said? Am I understanding correctly what you're having trouble approving?
Well, as a board member, we can have questions regarding any person on this list of recommendations. I can't just pull one person's name off, so therefore, I have to say no on the whole list.
Okay.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yeah, I'm going to recommend, I think Nancy is entitled to that view, and I, I would caution the Board to talk about individual personnel.
Okay, so this doesn't have to be moved like the last one did because it's already, because it was coming from, okay, so I'm going to ask for motion to approve the personnel list.
So moved.
That would be from one of you.
So moved.
Thank you, Alexandra, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And Laura Lee, please call the roll. We don't need more discussion, do we? No, no, is there, yeah, okay, Laura Lee?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
No.
And it passes 6 to 1. Thank you. All right, we will now move to our discussion items, which will start with 8.1, which will be aspiring leaders update. Dr. Schneider?
Curriculum first.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at what I had. I'm sorry, just a minute. Let me find my agenda. Somebody rearranged those. Just a second, I'll be with you. Okay, curriculum update is first.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, and Dr. Schaefer. Tonight, we have for you a curriculum update. Last year at this time, we had new curriculum materials presented to you, Envision Mathematics for our elementary, and we had My Perspectives for our English Language Arts, grades 6 through 9. And so tonight, I've asked Tiffany Miller, our Director of Curriculum and Instructional Design, to be able to talk to you about how those materials adoptions are going, as well as a few other highlights from her team.
Give me just one second to get it uploaded.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming back again tonight. We, I know we've brought you back several times, but thank you.
And I'm here next week as well.
Yes, but thank you. We appreciate it.
I was going to say, Dr. Seabrook's bumped my spot. I'm very excited to be first.
Okay, it's uploaded now.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the Board. I'm Tiffany Miller, Director of Curriculum and Learning Design. So tonight, we have, as Dr. Schneider stated, a curriculum update for the spring, and we are excited to, of course, look over our connection to Strive 2025 as listed below, and our GVC definition that, of course, we have used from Marzano that you have seen before and you'll see again. And as we review these curriculum updates, we have Envision for our math, which is year one that we're in right now, and then our My Perspectives for 6th through 9th Language Arts, and we're in year one as well. So in the fall, we discussed what had been adopted, and now we're going to show a little bit of the work and everything that's been done over the course of this year. So as we look at our year one focus, I really want to recap that our first goal was to dive into Envision and really get to know what the curriculum is, and then how do we teach that to our students. The other big pieces, we've been working with All Learners Network, and they've really focused on that pedagogy and our professional development through our PD days, but also our onsite coaching, because ALN has been here, All Learners Network has been here throughout the year, working with our teachers in their classroom, giving real-time feedback, and then also working with our administrators and our coaches as we have rolled out Envision and math. So I have for you here some pictures of exactly what that looks like. We really wanted students to develop a model for what their mathematical thinking looks like, and so on here, I've represented both kind of pieces that we, when we were in classrooms visiting, what that might look like. So as a student is using a 120 chart, their work is on the left, but they're showing different ways of how they're solving that problem. When you look on the right, we've got a third-grade classroom here, and they're demonstrating different ways to model fractions. And of course, when you're starting to look at that, whereas kids are seeing what two-thirds really means, and then how do we multiply that by five, they're starting to demonstrate exactly what they're seeing, and then how do they prove their answer is right? So instead of focusing so much on exactly the right answer as a teacher, now we can really start to dive in and see maybe where those errors are, or exactly what they do know, and then how far we can push them in terms of fractions. So again, two representations of some of our work with ALN. And then the other piece that our teachers have used in vision for is creating these math menus. So most of you have been in our classrooms, and you see that similar in our Language Arts, where they're doing those literacy stations, they've got, you know, a reading table, they're doing that now in math through Math Menu. And so here is an example of what we're seeing in our classrooms. And it's really neat to see that teachers are now doing small groups in math as well, similar like they do in Language Arts. They're doing journal prompting, they're doing problem solve. That example on the left is actually a kindergarten classroom. And so kindergartners get this sheet, they go around, and then they check off the box when they've completed something. And then the teacher gets to see that. But it also gives students the opportunity to practice and work on math problems independently. Of course, we've got access to the All Learners Network online, which gives us math games that support our learning with Envision. Really exciting to see when students are able to go through those centers and do that in math as well as Language Arts. So as we look here, I can easily see how students are taking the problem, deconstructing that, which is where you'll see that 436 pencils circled, how, you know, many pencils they need. They're circling the seven and the four. They're showing us how they're deconstructing that prompt. The neat part is, I was telling our director team, I happen to be in a classroom, and the student goes, "Miss," on that second problem below, he said, "Miss, I am exhausted," or "I'm tired of telling you how I want to explain my answer." So he wrote no on that. And then he erased it, and then he solved the problem. And so we worked through it. But it was so funny, he goes, "You just keep asking me how to show you that I know this." And so it was cute, so I had to throw that one in there. But really, the students are doing such a great job through Envision of really demonstrating what they know. But then also, we're able to see exactly how they're solving the problem. Our goal is to see students solving it in different ways, because different ways work for different students. And so again, different problems here. One student broke it into tens, they're counting by 20, 40, 50. Clearly, I can see that and understand that they do know how to count by tens. Then they're starting to add in some fives. I've got 40, and then 35 and 20. And then now I'm starting to use double. They know 20 and 20. And then starting to add other numbers that they know. It's really exciting again to see. This one example actually is from a kindergartner. They were working with base 10 blocks and then the single cubes. And so when they were starting to represent the base 10s, which are those long sticks, if you remember, it's 10 cubes put into one, but it stays as a stick. They were starting to lay them out against a numbers chart and starting to associate now with our place value and our number sense, what does 20 really represent? It's not a two, it's a 20. And so it was really exciting to see that this was a kindergartner's work. The student that told me no was not a kindergartner, he was a third grader. But he ended up solving it very similarly with going back to representing exactly what those place values are, which is the strength that we're seeing with Envision right now.
To your next one. The evening that we were at Namakwa, and I don't know if you were there, but Namakwa was presenting, and they had a math problem for us. And that was the first real visual that we had of what it was, what it was really like. And that helped a lot. Another picture for us, so thank you.
So now we're going to pivot to my perspectives. So again, focusing on that implementation. And so each of our sixth through ninth Language Arts teachers attended a full day of PD in our fall to familiarize themselves with my perspectives. Of course, we've got Robin O'Donnell is our literacy specialist here in our curriculum and learning team. And then our administrators are also going through monthly training with us at each of their principal meetings. So we can inform them of what each of those pieces of my perspectives includes. So again, a visual for you all. As we're really diving into my perspectives, it's intended to be a blended curriculum. There's an online component, there's a workbook component, and then students are also doing some handwritten responses. So the neat part is on the student on the left, you'll see the Chromebooks. My Perspectives has a component in there where they can do a written response in the system, and it sends it to the teacher. So they're practicing coding the text or highlighting a vocabulary word, sliding it into their response, and then it goes directly into the teacher. And then on the right, we've got an example here of a group of students who all read the same prompt in their performance-based task at the very end, is to do an argumentative essay. Here, they're filling out a graphic organizer where each of them had to take one piece of the text, find a different argument, and then write a response to support their argument. Of course, sometimes they agreed, but they had to choose a different stance based on their opinion or their text. And then they're citing, of course, the text, using it in their graphic organizer to develop their essay. So that's one example there. Another part of my perspectives is Revision Assistant. So Theo Robeson, our Executive Director of Secondary, is asking all secondary principals to bring student samples. So I have pulled actually out a student sample. This is the same student, I took off the name, obviously. This is a sample from October, and this is a sample from February on your right. So the neat part of Revision Assistant is it is an AI software that is a portion of my perspectives. Students end up typing their essay or their short response in my perspectives, and they get on that bottom left-hand side a signal check. This is instant feedback that the teacher does not have to go over to the student, give a written score, give verbal feedback. This AI system gives immediate feedback to the student, again, in real time. Student can submit it to Revision Assistant, and they get these kind of cell phone signal check. So if I'm looking at this, when I did that Revision Assistant signal check, clarity of my essay was not really strong. But when I start to look at organization, I do a little bit better. The evidence that I've cited from the text is a little bit stronger. But my language is really, you know, working well in there as well. So overall, my organization and development is pretty strong. However, I need to go work on that clarity and development of my essay before I turn it into my teacher. Again, students really like this because it's that instant feedback that they're not waiting and saying, "Okay, I've got, you know, five other kids. I need to wait for the teacher to get to me." They're able to get this immediately. So I'm going to switch to current trials. So World Language and Science, sixth through eighth, are about to wrap up. We've already got their data in. We've done and conducted our student interviews, our teacher feedback, our administrative feedback, and then our community feedback. And then we're going to be back in April, I believe, next week actually, to present our findings from both of those trials. So overall, we're really seeing positive results in both adoptions and our current trials. I also wanted to note that both of our executive directors have received positive emails from our staff saying, "Thank you for the professional development that we've received," and that we're really starting to see a shift in our current teaching and a shift in our instruction. And so the other piece that I want to say is through our visits, we're really observing strong use of our curricular materials. And I think we're definitely seeing that overall growth in both of those areas. So an update on summer scholars. All nine site coordinators have been hired. We've got two SEL specialists that have been hired, and registration is currently open using Infinite Campus. So currently, there was a question around how many total seats do we have? And I wanted to put that in here because we have the availability for 1,500 seats. Thank you to you. And so we're really excited. Compared to last year, we had 750 seats. So opening up another site, adding more middle schools, we're able to double that number. I looked today, we've got 465 registrations already in in just two weeks. We still have another two weeks, and of course, we've got that registration closing. But we're going to blast that information out and continue to grow that number. And we're continuing to hire our teachers through that program as well. So very excited. Also wanted to show here that our summer scholars program, our expectations have been set for every day. So just like our classrooms look with foundations, ReadyGen, My Perspectives, Big Ideas, Envision, that's exactly what Summer Scholars is using to support our students in their learning. They also have an expectation to do a do-now or kind of that entry ticket to the classroom, get their brains thinking in the content. And then they will also have learning targets, they'll have passes for the hallway, so we can really make sure that kids are using all of those skills that we do each and every day in summer scholars. We also are making sure that parents have weekly parent communication for summer scholars, knowing it's three weeks and four days. We really want parents to be informed about what's going on. And then at the very end, the very last day, our families will be invited in for a presentation of learning of what students have learned over the 12 days for summer scholars. What questions do you have?
I have one quick question. Is there a fee this year for summer scholars?
No.
There is not? Okay, I couldn't remember knowing our fund money was gone. Uh huh, okay.
Tiffany, Revision Assistant is provided and powered by AI?
It's a, is a component of AI, yes.
Okay.
It's fascinating. I can see you processing that.
I understand what that means. You're laughing, notice I'm not. I don't understand your comment. Do students receive any feedback from teachers in regard to the revision process? It's not all provided by AI?
No, once they are at that point where they're ready to submit, they would submit then to their teacher, and the teachers would go through and score it using their rubric. This is more of that quick check that they can use just to make sure they're on track.
Thank you, Tiffany, and I do know what AI is.
The first one is along the same with the Revision Assistant. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. So on that page 11, the shorter writing, that was what was put through the AI assistance?
Yeah, in October.
And then the final on the, where it says Dr. King versus Mel? Is that what the student finally wrote, or did the AI help write that?
No, the AI doesn't help write anything. It just gives a signal check. That actually is a demonstration of what a student submitted in October compared to what they submitted in February.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
We're seeing a huge difference in our writing of what students submitted in that first round of bringing student work back to the principal meeting compared to that second sample.
Not the same topic necessarily.
Not the same topic, no. Different topic.
The words are, so I was like, okay, now it makes sense. And then the other, so on the summer scholars, I think it's really great to have a problem like this on math. My question is, I just remember how popular the Camp Extreme was because it was so, so hands-on. So how will this scholars, I mean, be structured? So it keeps them really, you know, kind of at the same level of excitement and engagement like the Camp Extreme.
Yeah, so an hour of each of the days for summer scholar is still an enrichment period. And so each of our site coordinators have reached out to our local businesses. We've got artists, we've got different kind of community members that are willing to come in and do some type of enrichment for at least an hour of summer scholars. It's a great question. We built an entire list of people who are willing to come in for free and be a part of that. So they'll still have some hands-on learning experiences. Some are doing their Foskett experiments. But it's really going to be based on the kids in front of them. It won't just be a blanket enrichment activity for all students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right. 8.2, I think, is aspiring leaders now.
Aspiring leaders.
Oh, there he is.
Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer. Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer. So I'm really excited about doing this presentation because aspiring leaders. So three years ago, oh, hang on, I'll go over all this stuff. So focus area three is human talent. Develop staff in all job classifications through enhanced opportunities. This presentation will connect the Strive 2025 number three, human talent, to programs supporting all employee groups. So we're pretty excited about this. So the discussion tonight, we'll talk about our aspiring leaders course. Employee testimony, we have two employees, if they just want to wave. Two employees are going to give great testimonies, so we're excited about that. So, okay, so first I'm going to start. Melissa Snyder, Dr. Snyder, in her previous position, her and I kind of sat down and started brainstorming about professional development. And the thing we kind of talked about is, we started seeing like our internal candidates applying for leadership positions and being outperformed by people outside of our district, right? So we had connected with CSU, and we had CSU come out, and we really wanted to talk to them about, like, what's the cost for college classes and what a cohort program could look like. And at the time, it was really outrageous, right? So to expect our employees to pay, like, what was it, $17,000 to go through a program? We just thought, hey, we could, well, this is on TV, but we thought we could do it better, right? Because it's kind of a homegrown program. So then for that, like, we built the program out. So the first year, we offered just the APT, we had 17 people, right? So we had a person that was in the initial group. And then Keely Guerin came on board, and she really expanded the conversations that her and I have had in her vision as well. It's to expand the program that we had built and get licensed staff involved. And then this year, extremely proud to get classified staff involved too. So we ran four programs. Basically, this year, we had a session for classified and then a session for licensed and APT. So that kind of gives you the numbers that we have. And it's an application process that people go through in a recommendation. So for the APT license, we have people in this room that have taught classes. So if you can raise your hand, and Dr. Schaefer's going to raise his hand too. Very proud. So we taught with all our expertise, right, and all the experiences that we had. Like, we bring it to the table of, you know, like, we can teach you great classes for our staff. So, you know, it started with TSD leadership, and I won't go over all of that. But basically, we offered a leadership 101 class, decision-making, creating a growth mindset. Next one. And then we had a class with communication, professional development, and the interview process, right? So the great thing about the interview process is like coaching people on what the interview process looks like. Especially if you don't apply for a lot of positions, right? Like, if you have a position that you've been teaching for 10 years and you haven't done interviews, it's just a great way to kind of revamp of what the current interview process looks like. So then we thought of, did we go backwards? One more time. Okay, great. So the classified, so classified, what we did was we really brainstormed on what the classified offerings could be. So we had leadership, of course, and then decision-making, leadership style. Carrie Bartman's in the room too, and she taught, like, if you go to the next one. She's the expert with difficult conversations, right? And then we had the change process and then the interview process. So we had a class for about an hour and an hour and a half and some other classes. But it was a great way to give back to our employees and really focus on professional development and help them, you know, reach their aspirations of what their next stage of their life that they want to be. And some people just want to be better at their profession. So we thought that was pretty cool. So I could talk all day about that, but we really want to get to the district testimonies. So we're going to call up, who would like to go first? Great, we're going to call up Dr. Kitty LaFond.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight and share with you my experience with TSD's aspiring leadership program. I was honored to be a part of the first group that went through in 2021, and it's been really fun to watch it really grow since then. The opportunity presented us with a lot of information. But for me, what was even more was, it inspired me because we had leaders in our district who were devoting their time, their wisdom, their knowledge, their experience, and really gave us a picture of real-life situations that they, as leaders, have been involved in. So I just want to give you a couple examples. So our first speaker, presentation was Dr. Schaefer. And he shared with us a model that really helps you navigate the different perspectives and interpretations that people bring with them to the table when they're responding to a problem or to a situation. And he had excerpts from a book which were excellent. But the power was really in the activity that he had us do and the discussion. but the power was really in the activity that he had us do and the discussions that resulted because of it. And we really walked away realizing as a leader how masterful you need to be in that skill. And that's what really brought the readings to life. Dr. Seabirds shared with us a decision-making model that he uses and I have used ever since. He then gave us scenario after scenario in which we applied the decision or problem-solving, decision-making model two. And there was a lot of laughter, it was, it was a lot of fun. And again, we walked away with like a tangible tool that we could use immediately. Last one I'll share is Dr. Schneider. And she shared great information, but the, the one document that really stood out to me was the managing complex change. And it really laid out all the pieces that are necessary to have change happen and then kind of leveled down as to what the outcome would be if different pieces were missing. Every presenter was knowledgeable and had obviously spent a lot of time preparing to speak to us and present. They all had meaningful sessions and gave us lots of good tools that we could use. There's one other positive I just want to highlight. And, and for me, it was the opportunity to build relationships with other people in my cohort across the district. Relationships at a deeper level, ability, opportunity to have conversations at a deeper level that I wouldn't have been able to have in any other setting. The whole purpose was to kind of grow our own. And I'll say that several of the cohort members in my group have gone on to advanced leadership roles. So, so that's exciting. Obviously, I can't say enough about it. It was something that I benefited hugely from. And if someone asked me what I would say to someone who was looking at this program, I would say that every employee in this district who's maybe looking to move into a leadership role or to just enhance some of their own leadership skills, this was a great opportunity and one that I would suggest that they take.
Thank you.
And now we're honored for Bree Bell.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I'd just like to share my testimonial from being a part of the classified cohort. Some of the most pivotal aspects of my growth and success as a classified employee at Thompson School District have been the professional development offered, including the Thompson Aspiring Leadership Program I was privileged enough to be a part of. Masterfully crafted sessions included topics such as leadership, decision-making, difficult conversations, and the change in interview processes. Completing these sessions has enriched my career, encouraging me to embrace different viewpoints, communicate effectively and think critically. Dr. Schaefer kicked off a season of learning with a very effective and surprisingly fun experiential plenary.
Yeah.
It was, it was surprisingly fun. There were hula hoops involved. It was a good time. About leadership, that has enhanced my ability to collaborate with peers from various backgrounds through effective communication, but more significantly through a deeper appreciation for each of my coworkers as a whole person. In another session, Dr. Bill Seabirds was able to take our group through a deep dive into how each step of the decide model requires critical thinking from defining the problem to evaluating the effectiveness of the implemented solution. I reflect on this session regularly, considering the model helps in recognizing and mitigating biases in the decision-making process. What really makes this program so impactful is the accessibility and alignment with individual career aspirations. The tailored approach, taking into account personal interests and professional goals, has not only enhanced my resume, but also sharpened my vision for the future. These opportunities have cultivated a sense of resilience and adaptability in me, qualities that are indispensable in education. Overall, my experience with the Thompson Aspiring Leadership Program has been nothing short of transformative. It's equipped me with knowledge, skills and confidence to thrive in an ever-changing district. I'm grateful for the memories made, the lessons learned and the friendships forged. And I look forward to using and sharing the skills and values I picked up through this program. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
See, I told you the testimonies would be awesome. So at this time, any questions?
Questions down here?
I have one. Bill, I'd be interested to know what the positions are of the two people who spoke. I know one's APT, the other one is classified, but what, what are their jobs within Thompson School District?
So we have a PD coordinator and executive assistant or a secretary assistant, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Eight point three is our twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five budget update. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. For the record, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Also for the record, I'd like to just state that I have not been invited to deliver any presentation for the aspiring leaders. And further state that I'm not offended whatsoever by that obviously unintentional oversight. Thank you. Moving on to the exciting budget update presentation, alignment with STRIVE 2025. Really, when I look at, at the budget process and what that involves from our strategic plan that the district has in place, key words jump out at me like transparency, process, assumptions, estimates, revenue and expenditures being considered. Those types of things, I think, speak volumes and are really the bedrock of Focus Area Four, which is the stewardship of resources. Those that have seen me present, heard me present in the past, know that I typically like to hedge my bets perhaps. But I would say that I rise in front of the board tonight to offer a guarantee, a rare guarantee. That guarantee is the information you're about to hear in this presentation will undoubtedly change. Maybe that's a slight edge, I don't know. But, so where we are in the legislative process so far with the budgeting is the state budget long bill was introduced yesterday. So you can see that this deck, when I prepared it last week, it's already outdated. So the long bill was introduced yesterday. That's the state budget for all departments. The Joint Budget Committee has finished their figure setting now at this point with all the state departments. And they've also considered potential legislation that could be coming, but that's not reflected in what's been submitted in the long bill. So again, you can see I had the expected introduction to the House of Representatives this week. It actually took place yesterday. The school finance bill is a companion bill with the long bill and that just spells out in more detail the appropriation for K-12 education that's called for in the long bill. That was, that bill was introduced last Friday. It's kind of unusual. Typically, the long bill is introduced first and then the School Finance Act Bill or Public School Finance Bill is after that. This year they were in reverse order, but they had a pretty good indication of what was going to be released in the long bill. And then there's always other potential legislative items that impact or could impact school finance. And I've listed a couple of those. There's been conversations. There's been a task force that's, that's met previously that was called for in last year's legislation. They've made recommendations to the JBC, excuse me, it's the JBC. But there's, there's still potential changes that could be made in the, in the complex School Finance Act formula that's in place to the various factors that are used. Potential legislation that could impact that. Also of important note for the district, any district, is any legislation that might be passed associated with property taxation. So in the special session that was called last year in May, there were, I don't want to say remedies, but there were parameters put in place for what property taxation would be. But those have a one-year expiration, so they are only for the 2024 tax year, property tax year that we're in now. The legislature will undoubtedly be hearing some kind of bill in this session. They could elect to make, adopt into law, provided it passes through both chambers and achieves the governor's signature, but they also might take no action. If that's the case, undoubtedly on the November ballot, next November, there would be some citizen-initiated initiative that would address property taxation. So some, some unknowns associated with that. Some of the key items that we consider, every district does in the budget components in building the budget, what those are. Certainly we have revenue. Revenue is, is an always-changing number, but you can see the three primary areas I've tried to identify there. The School Finance Act, which in its simplest form is our funded pupil count times our per pupil revenue. That's a combination of state and local funding. Mill levy overrides, which are locally approved by voters, is another significant source of revenue for the district. And then other, which includes a variety of other things, just as the, as the description would indicate. An important note there I'll call out is the charter school amounts. So we, in, in the revenue numbers, we have revenue from the charter schools, for the charter schools, for their students. All of that is directed to the district first from Colorado Department of Education on a monthly basis. When we receive those funds, we forward them on to the charter schools for their proportionate share, typically based, loosely based on student counts. So we, we recognize the revenue for those students, but then also in our expenditures that we'll talk about in just a second, there are that transfer out. So we have the in in revenue, we have the out for the transfer, but it's really just a pass-through transaction. But both those amounts are what we would say grossed up for the charter school components there. Full-time equivalents, our salaries and benefits makes up the, the most substantive part of the budget for the district. If you're looking at general fund alone, it's probably in the eighty to eighty-five percent range when you talk about salaries and benefits across all classifications. That also includes the health, dental and life, insurance rates that we have and Para and Medicare. An important consideration here, the board has, I believe tonight on the consent agenda, actually adopted the proposed or the recommended increase in health, dental and life for employees only, that the district pays that percent or that, that amount. And that increased amount from the prior year, from this year to next year is, amounts to about one point two million dollars. So we know we have one point two million dollars of additional expense next year that we didn't have this year from that adoption. Then I mentioned the non-FTE costs. That's just what the, the title would indicate as well. It's really the department budgets excluding any of the FTE costs that go into that. That's operating expenditures, think utilities, think IT purchases, think liability and property insurance, items like that. It's a wide variety of items that we have. I think the non-FTE budget category that we have on the working document that we use to consolidate all of the templates from all of the departments when they come back in is over three hundred lines of detail in the non-FTE costs. That's also where you would find that charter transfer that I talked about just a moment ago. So for TSD specifically, when you look at some of the parameters, this, this really has to do with the funded pupil count, which is a key component of the School Finance Act. And I call out a couple items here. You can see, first it's broken down for Thompson School District specifically and then each one of our charter schools. Again, because we consider all of those students, all those students are considered in the, in the total program funding for the district. So you can see a decrease of a hundred and eighty-nine point two. This is one area that is certainly subject to change and it absolutely does change each, each year when we have the October count. So we're making estimates right now for what the October count will be in October of twenty twenty five, uh, five, four. I'm working in three different years now. So you have twenty, October of twenty twenty-four, which is in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. That's when the October count takes place. The board will recall, I typically come to you in January with an amended budget. This is one of the items that's amended is here was our assumption in the budget. Here's what we truly have from a finalized October count. So that hundred and eighty-nine point two, while certainly noteworthy, has a couple of factors that go into that. First, the district is experiencing declining enrollment as are the majority of the districts in Colorado and dare I say, across the country. There's a variety of factors that influence that. But we, we are having a declining enrollment when we graduate a senior class from the prior year that has more students than the kindergarten cohort that's coming in behind them. That's what, is largely what creates that difference. Also key to note in that is part of the School Finance Act, the legislation that's in place is a five-year averaging. That's, means that the district can take the greater of our October count each year or the October count for the current year plus the average of up to the four prior years. So it could be a two-year average, three-year, four-year, five-year average. Typically, it's in that, that five-year average that we experience or that we get the benefit of. Very similar to the graduating cohort versus the kindergarteners coming in. In the five-year averaging, looking back five years, we're dropping off a class or a student count, a funded pupil count that is higher than the current year that we're in. So again, that creates automatically a reduction in our funded pupil count from a calculation standpoint purely that, that is, has to be considered. And then the percentage increases that you'll see for the two charter schools, I call that out. They are both, they've had growth, they've had changes of facilities, they've done different things. They are largely at their capacity for their existing facilities. That's why we don't see very much change within, within those numbers anticipated for next year. This is the second part of the School Finance Act, which is the per pupil revenue or PPR. This provides a historical reference for you that you can see what that PPR is. Obviously, it's not obviously, in the state constitution, amendment twenty-three says that funding for the PPR essentially increases at the rate of growth plus inflation. So growth meaning student count growth and then inflation obviously being what it is. The assumed number in this year's budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget from the state level in the School Finance Act was eight percent. The assumed inflation rate for twenty-four, twenty-five is five point two percent. So while still higher than it's typically been in the past, it's certainly come down from that eight percent number that we saw last year. That's what largely impacts this, where you see that gradual upward slope. Of keynote here is in the red bar that talks about the budget stabilization factor. This was in place since the twenty-ten, eleven fiscal year. For the first time in that fifteen-year period since that point, the released or published or introduced School Finance Bill calls for the budget stabilization factor to be eliminated. So there is no reduction from what the formula would show essentially planned for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five year. That's an important consideration we'll see on the next slide because that's been a substantial reduction that we've seen in school funding over the last fifteen years. Moving on to that slide shows all the components that make up the School Finance Act or you'll hear it referred to as program funding, total program. Those are typical references to, to this. This shows what the local share is versus the state share. And then in the red bars is the amount of negative factor, as it was originally called, since referred to as the budget stabilization factor. budget stabilization factor. Um, you can see the the for the difference between what the formula calls for and what was actually funded just to Thompson School District specifically. Um, i- is that um it's a hundred and sixty-nine point million, a hundred and sixty-nine point one million dollars over that fifteen-year period, which was reduced funding that Thompson School District um did not receive if the original school finance formula were taking taken at the 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 calculation as as described. Um, this is where, um, again, those that have heard me present, um, one of the first things I learned nine years ago when I started presenting on the budget is um an analogy that was made to me and I've used and um what is it? Uh, um, I I can't say the the first word of it, but copying is the uh most sincere form of flattery. I've heard uh two other districts in of presentations that I've watched from other districts using that, that the bucket never overflows. So that bucket of School Finance Act funding um is comprised of a local share from property taxes, a local share from specific ownership taxes, which is a very small amount of each licensing fee that takes place within the district boundaries, and then the state share or the state contribution or the state backfill. Um, at if as one of those rises, the others decrease. So as property values have increased in Laramie County and really across the state, the local contribution share has increased, as you can see by the blue bars here. Um, the local share increases, but that just means the state share has decreased. And you can see relationally what that looks like over the last uh uh fifteen, fourteen or fifteen years, um more than that. I can't do quick math, sorry, um, at this hour of the of the night, anyway. Pending uh twenty-four, twenty-five considerations that we have as a district, um I've alluded to some of these already. Um, potential is a key word on these. Um, we have what's been introduced in the School Finance Act right now, which is largely in line with what the governor's proposed budget was that was released in November. But there is the potential for adjustments, new new legislation to be introduced, adjustments to the legislation that has been introduced already, uh amendments to that. So there's there's plenty of things to change, but from a revenue perspective, the main things are, will there be any changes to the School Finance Act formula? Um, and the related factors that are in that size factor, at-risk factor, cost of living factor, a variety of different things that go into that. Universal pre-K, um, we'll be heading into the second year of of universal preschool, um, which is not uh managed through the department, Colorado Department of Education, but so not CDE, but rather CDEC, Colorado Department of Early Childhood, uh child, yeah, childcare. Um, chi- early childhood, yeah, that's the right uh frame of definition for that department. A new department that was created for UPK or United, uh, wow, I am uh struggling here a bit, um, of of universal pre-K. So there's um, there's potentially some changes there as they have one year of experience under their belts, um, how that affects different districts, what funding may be available. I wouldn't expect significant changes in those rates from what we've seen this year. It's based on ten-hour service, fifteen-hour service, and thirty-hour service for um preschool programs. Um, the tax legislation I talked about, um, that has an impact on not only our state versus local share, but also on our mill levy overrides. Um, that's dependent on the assessed valuation. So if there's changes to the the rules around property valuation, um, it could have an impact on those items. Full-time equivalents, um, we know what uh we've talked about the one point two million dollar increase in health, dental, and life. Um, the negotiations process starts uh April eleventh is the first session for that. Um, so uh that will have um some bearing on what what changes or what adjustments we'll make in the assumptions for full-time equivalent costs. And then on the non-FTE side, uh, I mentioned um some of those items, utilities, we have an indication that those are going to likely be about one point two million dollars more than what we budgeted for twenty-three, twenty-four. So we know that going into the process. General inflationary costs for typically, um, when we send templates out to the departments um for their budget um requests or their um where they expect their their allocated dollars to be spent um for the coming year, we allow for a three percent inflationary increase um on those costs. That number, just given the inflationary at three percent versus the five point two percent that we know is in the School Finance Act formula, is roughly another million dollars that we would anticipate. Now, the board, at their discretion, has the ability to adjust those amounts, um, yes to this, no to that. Um, that's what the the budget process is. That is the uh, um, as as they say, um, the, you don't, i- it's good to have a little bit of information about the sausage-making process, but the important thing is the sausage at the end, which is the budget that um um is something that uh everybody is familiar with and comfortable with. So after all those analogies and uh some weak attempts at humor perhaps, any questions that I could address for the board?
Um, so we um looked at the budget recently and we talked about, you know, how exciting it is that we have the BS factor as of right now, zeroing out. And um, I think it's interesting, you know, like over the course of this ti- that since the time they've been doing it, it's been adding up and they they've talked about it like, one day, they're gonna give us this money back. And I just think that's probably not gonna happen, but if they do, I figure you would have a better idea of that than I would. So do you think it is possible that there is some day where we're gonna get a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars that they haven't previously had to give us? Do you think they'll find that and give it to us any point before I drop off?
I will offer my opinion, this is my opinion only.
Fair.
Um, the hundred and sixty-nine million that I referenced is for Thompson School District.
Yeah.
When you look at a hundred and seventy-seven other districts across the state of Colorado, um, I believe the the figure that's been tossed about is three billion dollars.
That's all?
Um, I I would be um highly surprised if that were to be um, you know, just based on the simple math.
Yeah.
And um taxation laws in the state of Colorado, legislative uh constitutional laws, um, it's it's highly unlikely, I it would be my opinion.
We're, I mean, it's taken us over a decade to figure out how we could even get back to where we were when we started this, let alone, like, I've never heard anybody have a have a fa- a like even really a conversation that was able to take a step past that. This was a big step. It's significant and it's great. And also, like, I think it's worthwhile to mention that as we talk about, you know, like, the budget. In the context of this, it is not as if we're gonna get that money back realistically and so we can't uh bank on it at any point realistically. And that's a lot of money. I mean, that's like this, the amount of a new high school, if we were to build the big fan, like, the big one that we talked about, right? I mean, that's approximately that amount. Um, and that's all, that's a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars worth of stuff that we haven't been able to do for over a decade. Um, and it's not as if, oh, we will be getting it someday, in which case we could just wait. So I just feel like that's worth talking about because that, I think, is significant and how we step forward with getting to zero and celebrating that, but also like the reality of what that means to us. So also, I want to make sure I wasn't totally wildly off topic, cause if you knew of a place that was gonna give us a hundred and sixty-nine million, I'd like to know that too, that'd be great. So thank you.
No, if I could offer one additional comment, um, while I don't think that's realistic to have repayment of that uh that um reduction over the last fifteen years, I will say that there is consideration um with the task force that I mentioned earlier. They made recommendations. Colorado has one of the five oldest unmodified School Finance Acts in the country. So um the um, as part of the leg- this legislation last year, there was a call for the uh interim finance committee or a school finance committee to come back with recommendations to adjustments to the formula. They have done that. Um, it it may be a bit premature with having the first year of not having the budget stabilization factor or having that eliminated to maybe enact some of the uh recommendations because that would increase, while it would be beneficial for um every district, most districts, I should say, um, their overall School Finance Act funding. It 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 may not be the right time to do that. Um, the the commission has already, or the uh um committee has already um recommended and they've commissioned a adequacy study. So what's the adequacy of the School Finance Act in Colorado and what that could mean for changing of the formula as well? Again, in my opinion, I believe it would be prudent to see what uh what the findings of that adequacy study are before any wholesale changes were made to the School Finance Act.
Yeah.
My opinion only.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's data, right? Can't hurt to have the data to make a decision with. Um, can you remind me of a couple other things that you've said um that I think I have memorized, but I'd rather know that you're saying it accurately? Which is that we're in the top ten percent of schools size-wise, or school district size-wise, but funding-wise, that's the, it's not the same. Is that, isn't that right? Can, what are those numbers again?
We are the sixteenth largest school district by funded pupil count in the state of Colorado, uh, which puts us in the top ten percent, being a hundred and seventy-eight districts. Um, from a uh PPR, per pupil revenue funding perspective, we are one of eight or nine floor-funded districts, meaning the um what the formula yields, the School Finance Act formula yields from the calculation standpoint, um, our amount has to be raised to meet the minimum amount that is called for in legislation for um a a per pupil amount, um, us and along with eight or nine other, seven or eight other districts.
So if I were to say that in layman's terms, to make sure I understand it, we're in the top ten percent size-wise and we're in the bottom five percent funding-wise per pupil revenue.
Five to ten percent, yes. Um, I will also defend the formula a bit in, from a size, size factor is one of the items in the School Finance Act formula. So being one of the um top sixteen districts size-wise does give us a little bit of a a bump, but again, it's it do- it doesn't overcome us being a floor-funded district.
Yeah, I mean, I just, that's like a huge, that when I heard that from you the first time, I went, wait, what? Because even though I've heard all these numbers separately, the relationship between being in the top in one side and the bottom in the other, um, and then what we've managed to do with Four Daniels finalist just this evening, um, and all the other stuff, is a big deal. And I almost swore, which I know is bad. I heard a report that it's bad to swear because it's amazing what we're doing with that and what we've tried to get done and what we've struggled to do because of all that. So thank you for letting me just get through that.
Thank you, Board.
Yeah, thanks.
After further consideration, we have moved Gordon Jones to the waitlist to teach an inspiring leaders class. Uh, we uh want to recognize Mike Cosman teaches our communication class, so uh, Gordon, thank you. Madam President, School Board, Dr. Shaver, Bill Silver, Chief Human Resources Officer. Uh, I'm accompanied by A- Andy Crisman, our TA president. So this presentation is just a negotiations update, Strateg twenty-two-five, three-point four, covers human talent, investigate areas in compensation and benefits so that TSD is competitive, and and that's a continual uh con- conversation that we have. So this presentation will cover that. Thank you. So the discussion items will be, the negotiated items, we're in a two-year agreements or in the second year of a two-year agreement, so there's compensation in two or related items, and then we'll review negotiation dates and times.
President Cruz, Dr. Shaver, members of the board, I'm Andy Crisman, uh, music teacher and currently president of the Thompson Education Association. Um, our negotiating side is for this year, we're gonna talk about compensation, um, and how do we continue to become, remain close to competitive uh regionally and and how do we recruit and retain professionals? One related item, we, last year, we negotiated uh some changes to our elementary PLC structure and our planning time structure, and so we're gonna be in kind of a plan, do, check, adjust mode on that, how has that affected uh various things? Um, has the basically, has the impact matched the intent? And then um the other related item we're gonna be talking about is um, how do we support collaborative decision-making? And so it's basically looking at our current collaborative decision-making structure and um asking again, is the intent of the matching the impact that it's having?
Great, so the negotiating team is pretty much the same, we just have one new member, uh, Pat- Patty Bergen, who's taking over for Charlie Carter. And then the dates on the next page, uh, so there's three dates that we have. I- it's it's not a long process for, because we're in our second year. So we offered an invite to the board, April eleventh, April twenty-fifth, and May seventh in the boardroom and uh, you know, eight to four o'clock, and then Cottonwood on the last day on May seventh. And then that that's just a reminder of the strategies we use for negotiation, we use the interest-based model, and that covers the steps that we go through for each one of the related issues that we'll do this year. So thank you, and any questions, Board?
All right, um, there's one included for the board. There's also, I thought I saw a high.
There is.
Are there requests for information? All right, I'm gonna repeat.
An elementary school instructor from Concord.